We don't have a sign up sheet tonight that we try to keep our comments to around three minutes. Pertinent to the items that are on the agenda for this evening only. We've got these meetings scheduled pretty much every two weeks. So there's plenty of opportunity to speak about the other items as they come up. So it's this evening, the items on the agenda are regarding the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the Board of Education. So I don't know if, when you do stand up, if you can state your name and your address. And if you have written comments, you can submit them to the secretary and then Franklin will distribute to the commission. I don't know if anybody wants to go first?
I just got a message that Franklin was sick today.
Okay.
So.
I hope he feels better.
Okay. So I, I asked Marc.
Is, do we have anybody in public audience who'd like to speak?
Alright, so I'm gonna go first. So I don't know how we're doing this, that's why I was asked before before, but um, my comments are gonna be in general um, about all three and then specific to the Board of Ed, okay? Um, so.
If you could just say your name and address before, sorry.
Oh. Everybody, Sharon Thomas.
You just need to correct it. Okay.
Forty-two Brinkwood Drive.
Okay.
Simsberry, Connecticut, zero six zero seven zero. Um, so my comments are relative to um, the tri-board. So the tri-board of the Board of Ed, Finance, and Board of Selectmen. I've been on the board now coming up on six years. And one of the things that I've always wondered about is why the Board of Ed doesn't run for office. Um, the tri-board to me, it's my personal feeling that there's an inequity um, in that the Board of Ed doesn't run, but every other board runs. And I don't know if you guys are gonna respond to that or not, but it would be my suggestion um, that we align the Board of Ed to the other boards. Um, and allow that board to run for office as well. The other thing that I think that should be considered, and I don't know if there's something that prevents that, is the current Board of Ed is eight members. Um, if there was ever a time when there needed to be a vote, and the way that we're structured right now with it being four and four, I don't know how that vote would be broken. So the other alternative too is to increase the board to nine. Um, the chair I know is always there to break the vote, but if it's four and four, um, that's kind of, be kind of hard. Um, and that's the, the way the board is aligned today, it's four and four. So my suggestion again is that the charter be, that there be consideration for, in the charter, that the Board of Ed be aligned with the other boards as part of the tri-board and that all boards run for office. I'm done.
Sorry.
Time's up.
Thank you.
I don't know if that will make three minutes, but.
You have a minute thirty left.
Okay.
Would anybody else? Need to make any comments?
I'll go. Um, I have uh, just quick notes on, on two boards, the Selectmen and the Board of Ed.
Lori, could you just state?
Oh, sorry, Lori Boyko, fifteen oh first row. Um, on the, on this Board of Selectmen. Currently in the charter, the Selectmen have the ability to create boards and commissions outside of those that are in the charter. They can, they can create permanent ones, or they can create temporary ones. The temporary ones are supposed to be no more than two years in duration and co-terminus with the term of that board that created it. Um, on that note, I think that the town in the charter needs to clarify which other boards, if any, have the authority to create their own sub-boards and commissions. For example, the Library Board of Trustees, which is a nine-person board, recently created a policy committee of three people. I don't even, I'm not sure if the board even voted on it or if it was just created by the chair. But I don't, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. I think the Library Board of Trustees is a policy board, I don't know why they need a sub-policy committee. I'm not even sure they also have the authority to do so or not, and I think that should be in the charter. I do think the charter needs to put some parameters on those two-year temporary committees. So that they're not just recycling the same two-year committees under different names. And I think there should be more clarification on the procedure required for the Board of Selectmen to create those committees. Um, and I would suggest that it reiterate, reiterate, under the Board of Selectmen authority to create those boards and committees, that those members of those new boards and committees must be electors of the town of Simsberry. That is stated elsewhere, but there are people on our boards and committees right now in this town who are neither residents nor electors of the town of Simsberry. And I'm not even talking about people that sort of kind of live in Florida sometimes. I'm talking about people that live in neighboring towns or on our boards and committees. With regard to the Board of Ed, I want to reiterate, um, for people that don't understand, that the Board of Ed is in effect appointed, not elected. It is uh, an elected position. We all go and vote or don't vote for the members of the Board of Ed. But the way it works now is that the Republican Town Committee and the Democrat Town Committee each appoint two people to run for four spots, which means we can vote or not vote for whoever we want, and all four of them are getting on. Now, there's other reasons for that too, if more people wanted to run for Board of Ed, that would help alleviate that issue. But I do think that needs to be looked at from a charter standpoint. It is, that board has the largest fiscal impact on our town. At eighty-five million dollars, I want to just quickly lastly say that the subcommittees of the Board of Ed always meet like at eight-thirty in the morning or noon when people are working. And I think those subcommittee meetings where most discussion happens should be at least partially on Zoom or entirely on Zoom and recorded for those people that are working and cannot watch them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Hi.
Our House one three seven East Wheaton Street. Also, simply say that a number of members of the Board of Finance have taken this meeting and it's testament very seriously. And my remarks will be thoroughly incorporated in those given by our chairman, Lisa Hovna.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in public audience want to say something? Jackie?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much for having those public audience. And we're gonna move on to the Board of Selectmen Charter sections. I'm gonna stop the timer.
Thirty minutes did you say?
No, I'm gonna time you, yes, thirty minutes, I'm not timing you, but yes.
I'm gonna put my timer on because I don't want to be too much of a windbag.
So this is our opportunity to discuss the list that came from the Board of Selectmen and have a discussion and question and answer theory issues and even clarify some things and give additional information and background information.
Okay, start. Um, so I, I have opening comments, I don't know if they're opening or closing comments, but I moved them to the front. And before I get into the details. So I just want to say that a first selectman is not an easy role. You're responsible to the public, yet you do not have direct oversight of administration. It's critical to have a town manager and first selectman that can work well together and be collaborative, sharing information, as without it, both of us are not able to do our jobs. My second term is night and day from my first term as a first selectman, so it shows the importance of who fills each of these roles. The town manager needs to be able to adapt to a new elected official every two years, and they may be here, and they may be here for an extended period of time. So we should be able to navigate in our lane to do the best job we can. Each new first selectman should have the freedom to determine how they want to take on the responsibility of the job within the parameters of the charter. Members of the last board viewed the job as a ribbon cutter. The charter did not say that, and the public wanted someone involved and accountable. My interpretation of the role is to be one of accountability, transparency to the residents of Simsberry, and to do what I believe is in their best interests, and that role should not be hampered by the charter. Okay? So, um, in section A, right, we're gonna talk about reviewing the number and functions of town boards and commissions um, to make adjustments as the commission deems appropriate. We kind of put this together as a, as a, you know, overview to ask you guys to look at all the boards and commissions that we have in town. To look at the terms of office for those boards and commission, the length of terms, if there's term limits. To eliminate any dormant boards and commissions. Do we, do we need all the boards and commissions that we have? Can any be combined? We don't have an agenda, but we feel that there are many and want to make sure that they are all needed. Are any no longer used or ineffective? Are some of these parts of staff responsibilities now? At one point, EDC was on the chopping block at the last charter revision. Is that um, is that something we want to revisit and potentially have that as a hired position if we can hire anybody? Are elected boards able to be, are any elected boards able to be appointed? So looking at the boards that are elected, could any of those switch to an appointed board? Maybe that's vice versa, but these are just kind of the, the overall things that we've talked about. And then item D, which is consider the, to operate under uniform rules of procedure. Is, I think it's attempting to make sure, I skipped the party one, sorry. I'm a little nervous, I'm usually not nervous, but.
You're not scary.
Damn, you are scary. D is attempting to make sure that there's a process for voters of all parties and unaffiliated and that it's clear. Okay, and we've talked about that at our, at our level too. Um, for E, consider amending the charter to follow rules. Um, things have come up that some boards and commissions say you can only, if you miss three meetings, you have to resign or things like that. And so we were talking about, is there kind of a rules of procedure that applies to all boards and commissions? And under F, come, we really wanted this group to look at the role um, and the potential combination of planning and zoning, which I know was done last time. And I know that multiple communities similar to ours have a related board and commission. You know, so that's just something we put out there. We did not include this, but it did come up in our discussions about looking at Board of Ed as an elected, a truly elected board and as opposed to kind of elected slash appointed, that it's a set number. Um, and this is why we asked all of the Charter Revision Commission to reach out to the boards and commissions for input, because I'm sure that you could get that from the people that are on the boards and commissions. And then one thing, this is more probably for Bob, but the, a lot of the boards and commissions are in ordinances within the charter. And it, does that limit us from making changes and adjustments to those boards and commissions and make it harder to do that? And should they be more or less outside of the charter? Because they're in the code right now, that's something I don't have an answer to, but you guys could take that one off.
Just to give you some background on, at our last meeting, what we asked Franklin to prepare for us, which is part of the agenda for tonight.
Yep.
Is uh, an analysis of towns and what boards and commissions each of those towns that are similar to us.
Yep.
Have or don't have, so we had some guidance in terms of where other towns have moved towards for part of our discussion. So we've all got that, it's part of the agenda for tonight too, so.
Yeah, I looked at it, so it was, it was interesting to see, yeah. Um, okay, so do you want me to keep going and then if you want to come back to questions?
Why don't we, why don't we stop at section one and see if there's any questions of. People on the commission to see if there's any questions or additional context we want behind item one. I think um, one of the things that came out of our last meeting is we wanted to get, you're, not knowing which boards and commissions you felt were dormant or inactive, it's hard for us to gauge that. So we need to get some input from the Board of Selectmen on what they feel is potentially inactive or maybe even. Redundant boards that, in conditions, because we don't have that experience to know that.
And we did get the list, very extensive list of all the elected by voters, appointed by the Board of Selectmen, appointed by the first selectman, and the zoning commission.
Oh.
So it's a pretty extensive list when you actually look at it on a sheet of paper of all the commissions and boards.
So is that something we could get back to you guys, like, take it away and.
Absolutely.
Bring it up at the, at the board level?
Yeah.
I would say, you, you might not know this, but we actually reviewed this list of suggestions at our last meeting. So, you know, the questions.
So I'm being boring?
No.
Be thorough.
You're doing it so much better than Bob did last week. Really, it's night and day. But uh, I'd be most interested in hearing, you know, these are items that we're, you've asked us to consider.
Okay.
But we haven't heard anything about whether the Board of Selectmen takes a position on any of these questions or has a recommendation.
Okay, so that one, I'm not gonna take on myself because I might have different opinions on other people on the board. But I will figure out a way to make that happen. I think we, we tried to be as broad as we could, which is what we were instructed to do. So if we're gonna drill down a little bit more, I think we need to take it back.
And, and when you're doing that analysis, I think what would be useful for us is if you found a board to be effective or ineffective. It's to give us some sense of why you feel that way, because you are the ones who are closest to these boards.
I guess, we are in some sense, because we each, each board has, we have a liaison, so I can actually work with the liaisons um, for each board and commission and get their opinions from that perspective.
And, and I know we hear a lot about there, there being too many boards. But the question is, are there effective boards? And would there be a new board that is more effective than the boards that we have? And do you guys have that, that sense of what could be better or different? And we'd love to hear that too.
You know, just to pile on, I, you know, you get a sense of that, we keep hearing, right, that there's too many boards. But right, but when you get to the crux of what, what do you want to eliminate?
I know.
Everyone, well, not mine. So, it's the other hazard. So, again, any, any guidance would be greatly appreciated.
And especially the liaison, that they probably know um, how they, they probably want this portion of their board to be eliminated because that's ineffective. However, if we change it to that, it would be smaller and more effective. Uh, or something to that effect.
Yep, the only thing, um, we, you know, we may have some, I mean, I know a couple. It's being careful to not just kick people out of their jobs.
That's right.
Right, so we'd have to like, it'd be like a segue out if a board and commission. And the effectiveness of this isn't gonna happen that fast, so there will be time to do that.
I think the other um, question that has come up in some of our conversations have been unaffiliated voters because it's a large demographic. And how we incorporate that into the charter for all boards and commissions to have fair representation of all parties? And how do we envision that happening and how would that work? And is it, um, you know, there's six seats and two RDs, two RRs, and there's two U's and each one of those U's is appointed by an RRD, like, you know, just the logistics and all that, how do we work?
Okay.
What do you envision for that, um, from a selection standpoint? Because getting on the ballot is a challenge when you're not nominated by a party.
So I was just gonna address, um, so we did talk about that because um, Tom Fitzgerald was putting together a proposal on, on affiliated voters and how they can get on a board or commission coming through the town clerk's office. And there is a process that's coming out. But we did talk about elected, which unfortunately, an elected, an affiliate elected has to petition to get on the ballot, right? But there will be a process when there are openings, and I don't know how we define how many openings are for U or Ds on boards and commissions, for an unaffiliated voter to come through the town website and have the Rs and Ds come through the town website and say that they're interested in a board or commission. The Rs and Ds would go to the party, because that's what happens today, the party picks the people. And the U's would go through the town manager's office and potentially bring in the department head or anybody else that's needed to help assign that person to that board or commission. And that hasn't been implemented yet, it's been reviewed by our boards, but it hasn't formally been implemented. But that is a process for appointed boards that's being worked on. That might help here.
It might help, some guidance, because my guidance is consistent.
It might help, it might help on the uh, the appointed boards. Because right now, most of the appointed boards do have U's on them. And they have for a long time. And the question is also, if it's an elected board, how do you go about doing that when in effect there is a process for U's to get elected to the boards, and it has happened in, in many cases in the past, where they've had an opportunity to petition and they've gotten elected. Many people are U's because they don't want to be affiliated to a party. They want to be able to vote Republican for one or Democrat for another. So that is uh, that is the path they chose when they registered to vote. There's also the opportunity for them, if they really feel strongly about it, to decide, okay, I'm gonna run as a Democrat, I'm gonna run as a Republican. And that has happened more often than people realize, and they get elected. So if all of a sudden you're gonna say, you know, you, this spot has to be a U, what you may have happen is a D or an R may say, hey, I'm gonna register as a U. And that way, I can, I can upset the, a membership of that board. So instead of being four Ds and two Rs on that board, now all of a sudden you've got three Ds, one U, who's really a Republican. So you see what I'm saying? It's very difficult to figure that out, how to do that, whereas on the appointed boards, you have a little bit more uh, say in, in where you're doing that. And a lot of the, a lot of the uh, people who get appointed to boards, whether they're Ds or U's, still do come through the town website. I know that, because I was sat on nominating for six years. And I know that that's, that's how it happens. And many U's are, are there because, and they really are U's. So we don't want to create something that's going to create more problems and not solve the problem that you're trying to fix. See what I'm saying? So it's, in my view, it's a balancing act.
Yeah, and, but currently, there's really nothing in the charter related to, other than the ordinances for boards and commissions is where I think it says, a specific board might say they need two Rs, two Ds, three, two U's, or something.
I disagree with that. I know on many boards, there are defined U's, it may not be in the charter.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But it's there, and they do do it, because the boards have that set up. And it'd be hard for them to do away with that.
Well, I'm just, I'm saying in the charter, it doesn't refer to that at all, that I know of, any.
Police commission and ethics, Board of Ethics.
Oh, under their ordinance, okay.
They do mention that, yeah.
Okay.
But thank you. But generally, they don't.
Okay.
Bob, I have a question, so the state statute has requirements of how to get on a state ballot. Do we.
Yes.
Do the same rules apply to municipal ballots?
Yes.
Okay.
Elections, it's, it falls under the definition of elections.
So that's, that's nothing that can be modified?
You can't supersede the election statutes through a charter.
Okay.
Appointed is not covered under those same statutes.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, did you just take up all my time? No. I have work for things and that.
It wasn't intentional, you can come back.
Actually, I do have a question, and I do know that someone else was, as a first select option here as well. What is your opinion on a two versus four term for the Board of Selectmen?
Oh, I was getting, I'm getting to, that's my next item.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's, um.
Oh, well, there's also.
I'm waiting for this one.
There's also one A, so, you know.
Yeah, one A, that one I don't know, but two is really my wheelhouse, I was just gonna say. So, so as far as the terms go, um, my feeling is they should be four years. Whether it's the full Board of Selectmen or if, at a minimum, the chief elected official. Because it is insane that we run for office, we are in office for one year, and the next year, you have to decide if you're running again for office, and then by mid-year, you've got to start running for office. And then you're back in the organizational meeting, and it's that same short cycle. It's just very short, and I don't find it very effective in creating um, a good collaboration and good continuity with a board. That's my personal feeling. There are boards out there that are four-year terms, and there are some that are two-year terms, so that's tough for you guys. I would, I think four years would be great. The staggered terms, I'm, um, one of the points was to look at staggered terms because the Board of Ed and Board of Finance have staggered terms. I personally don't see staggered terms for the Board of Selectmen. And my thoughts are that it might make it difficult as the Board of Selectmen, we all come, or have come in as a team, and we run as kind of a slate. And I think different starting times may impact goal setting and policy work. My opinion.
But um, I guess maybe the concern, just speaking for myself, with not having staggered terms, right, is if you have, kind of like this year.
Last year, I was gonna say that.
Or, I'm sorry, last year, right, yeah, virtually a new board, right?
Yep.
Staggered terms at least gives you some continuity and some experience along the way.
True, that, no, that is, that's a great point. I was gonna say, like, in twenty-three, the, the whole board left. I'm not saying that's not a bad thing, it's, it's actually a nice board right now, so. My comment.
I just point out on that, that um, I don't necessarily disagree with the order of the four-year term.
Okay.
But I'd also say mirrors what the state rep and state senators in Connecticut are.
True.
Which.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's a good thing.
Yeah, the Congress, the Congress, right? Washington every two years.
No, there's been some comments about the Board of Selectmen running as a Board of Selectmen and the chief elected official being nominated by the Board of Selectmen.
Yep, I was, yeah. Oh, I was gonna, it's like your thunder. Well, I, this, I said, this is like, we're, so I was gonna talk about um, the second half of this, the form of government, right? So technically, right now, we have a council manager form of government. It's just called a first selectman and a board of selectmen because a council manager form of government has a town manager and a town council, which is what we have right now. Instead, and in, in many cases, thirty-three of the, of towns that have a council manager form, it's more likely a mayor council, um, which the mayor's the first selectman and the council is the council selectman. Or in some cases, it's a chair and a council, right? Um, so I personally think the chief elected official should be a standalone run and not just nominated by the chair, by the council, which some towns do. I think West Hartford does that. They usually pick the same person. But I know that Manchester used to be like that and has gone to a separately elected mayor. My thinking on that is the town should have a say in who they want to entrust as the chief elected official of the town. And not up to the council, um, or, you know, the highest vote getter who may or may not want it. Or if there's any partisan activity or something and somebody's trying to be that person, you know, that kind of thing. That's just my, my thinking. I do think that um, having a council with a self-elected chair is, gives, I think it takes away a little bit of the credibility of the whole board itself. I'm referring to, if I look at Avon, and nobody's here from Avon either. Sorry, and my, I'm sorry, my face is. So if I think about Avon and Coventry, they're really two different things. But in Avon, they have the, the board council, chair is elected by the council, and then they have a town manager. I never, I always see the town manager, I never see the council chair at events. So it seems like the, in that case, the town manager is taken all outward of the, the council, and they're not, the electeds are not out there being represented at CCM, at CROG, at COST. I don't, you know, that could just be their, their shtick, I guess. Because in Coventry, it's the same situation, and that chair is out in everything too. But again, I still believe that the chief elected should be elected. Although, if you did the council self-elected, it would eliminate the, one of the issues that is on here, which is item C, which was brought up, that in, in the case of the current Board of Selectmen, the person who runs for first selectman, they get enough votes, they bump somebody out of the selectman race, right? Which we've seen happen. And we feel that, A, should the person who doesn't get the first selectman seat go away? I know, one of the things I was gonna recommend is, I believe there are some towns that have some sort of criteria, that it has to be a certain amount of vote buffer, that the, do you ever, have you heard of that? Okay, did I make it up? I don't know. No, I've heard of it, that they have to have a certain amount of votes to fall into the group or something like that. So I don't know how you do that, and, and I don't know how required it is because it's been that way forever with us. But it was brought up, and there is a way to do that.
So I have a question regarding the form of government, because, I mean, we're talking about the charter, and we're, it's just an overarching conversation of, is this the right form of government for Simsberry? Is it working, what's not working, what is working? Because we have a hybrid version of, other towns are more towards the council. Some, you know, just have this hybrid version going on. just have this hybrid version of going on, which may be good, may be bad, but I think one of the things I would find very useful is to understand what metrics we are reviewing our town manager on to make sure that the accountabilities that the Board of Selectmen are holding him accountable for are addressed in the char, him or her, are addressed in the charter appropriately, now that we've had some experience with the town manager position, what really is that? And is it consistent with how our charter is written? And what needs to change? So, there must be a rubric that you're using to review the town manager?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
We don't wanna see the review, but I think it would be helpful for us to see what the metrics are.
So, it's, that's an interesting, these are all interesting topics. We're actually starting the town manager's review right now, and we're using a form that's been used and was implemented when our first town manager came in, that was created by a member of the Board of Selectmen. Some of us on the board have been trying to get a more automated product to use that's out there, right? Like, there are a lot of performance management systems, and the town has been looking at them, but it was not gonna be something we could bring in for this review. So as it is now, we have a review, I can send you, we're just formulating it, the kind of metrics that we're looking at. Most of them are the town manager's goals and how they meet their goals, and the rest are more of the soft skills, financial management, organizational management, things like that, those type of skills. And then there's different criteria, and we rank them, you know, just like any town re- review you would get in a corporation. You know, exceeds, meets, this kinda stuff like that.
Do those metrics go with the charter of the duties of the town manager, all those, I mean, there's, sorry, I'll turn a page, there's thirteen duties in the town manager's, in the charter, so if those aren't even being met, I assume, that's being referred back to the charter?
Yeah, so, so that's a great question, because as we're going through the performance management, again, it's, we're all, everybody's mostly new. There's only, Heather and I are the only ones returning, doing this for a few, third time. I've, I've pulled out the charter discuss, description, but they're, they're not all in line. I mean, there's that, right? There's the contract, there's the job application. I don't know, eh, some, I don't have the time, but somebody should pull them all together, make sure they're all in sync, right? So that's a, I think that's a very good point.
Well, I mean, that's, I think that this is our opportunity to get the charter in align with how we're hiring, what we're hiring somebody for, the job, how we're measuring them, and, and.
The contract.
The, and the contract, because if the town manager's role is to implement the policies of the Board of Selectmen, who are elected by the taxpayers, are those in line with what our charter is charging them to do? Like, it's, I know that's a complicated question, but it's, I think, a very valid question. Because I s- I can see how there can be conflicts, and if one of the metrics, I'll use this as an example, is grand list group, okay? For the town manager, yet, our mission is, in Simsbury, and our POCD comes out with, we value open space. How do we grow the grand list and protect open space at the same time, that's enjoy conflict with each other, right?
Wendy, since you've done this many times, and, and you too, Lisa, um, if you, since we have this hybrid model, in your opinion, what's the best way to do this? What, what do you wish you had? In terms of the relationship between selectmen, which is elected, and the town manager who's hired?
Well, first of all, I don't consider us really a hybrid, I, I mean, we're really a council. It's just the names are hybrid, right?
Well, do you, do you think that we need to clarify the relationship between the town manager, or the response, relative responsibilities of the town manager and the Board of Selectmen?
So I've been saying this since I became the first selectman. It, there's, there's nothing that defines my lane and the town manager's lane, as the first selectman. Um, it's been something that's been out there for a long time, and it's very difficult if people, before you set the lanes in one way, and that's not how you wanna follow those lanes.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut you off, right, but I, cuz I wanna get to that, but I wanted to ask first about the relationship between the town manager and the Board of Selectmen, and then, next about the role of the chief elected official, cuz those are two different questions.
So the que- say, say it a different way, like.
So do we need to clarify the respective, eh, do we need to do anything to clarify the relation, the terms of the relationship between the, and I don't mean to jump on your question, but be- between the Board of Selectmen and the town manager?
In, in some ways, yes, I guess. I think it all boils down to the flow of communications between the board and the town manager. Because technically, w- we act as a whole, right? I mean, we're supposed to act as a whole, I, I, as a, I'm not the chief executive, I'm the chief elected, and we do everything mostly by consensus. I don't have the power to go say, I wanna go fix the flower bridge, you know, let's do it, right? I have to get the board to, to agree to do that. So I'm not sure how to explain that. I, I do think setting the tone of the relationship between the first selectman and the town manager is important to make all of those parties work together well.
So if you, if you were to have one thing put into the charter that would set the tone for that, not going into details, because the charter cannot go into details, it's gonna constrict us forever, until the next time we go into charter review, what do you really wish you had?
It's a tough question, that's a. The town manager's salary. I'm sorry, I have to, I have to add levity here. So that's a tough question, because it took, for me, things have changed. Like, we, I have a good working relationship with our town manager right now, who is collaborative, and who listens and shares information with me. So, thing, that's why I was a little hesitant to do charter revision so soon, because this is only really our second town manager, and my experience was not ideal in the first realm, okay? Um, and I think we're, we're finding our way, and I think with this town manager, he, he is collaborative with our board, and shares information if asked for. So I don't know what the next step is, right? I, I, you know, I think the town manager form of government can work if everybody understands their role, and, and sticks to their role, and it's applied equally and fairly, is what I would say.
That's a good enough answer.
I think, I think that's part of what we're, we're doing too, is that it shouldn't necessarily be dependent on who's in that role, that things are defined enough that it's not subjective and subjective.
It's muddy right now.
That's what is required, so, based on just personality, if it's working out with one, but not the other, but if it's more clearly.
That's a great, that's a great point, Jacqueline. It, it's, it's hard if different people wanna do things differently, if there's some sort of guidance and parameters to stay within for each of the roles, and that there is some leverage for you to make it work for you, or your board, and your leader. I think that's the best way to do it.
I think a lot of problems could come up if people don't know who their boss is, and you haven't defined who has the responsibility for directing employees and their reviews and that kinda stuff. Is that clear? Is that?
We, we, um, we don't do reviews for department heads, that is the town manager's job. We review the town manager.
But is it clear to everybody else?
Oh, my time's up.
Time in herself now.
Both of some.
I'm gonna give you some light too.
I yield.
Well, that's a big question.
I, I don't know if I answered that, and I, it's, it's hard to say, I mean, I.
You find, there's conflicts, like, you're both telling, I want this to happen, and you both go to the same person, and they're like, well, who am I, who am I listening to? That's the kinda thing I would think, that in a charter, some places gotta be really clear, our case.
I think, I, I pretty much u- understand my role right now. I think this, this term is, I understand where I am, and I've come a long way, I think, and I have, I feel kind of empowered to, to be the leader that I'm supposed to be, at the level that I'm supposed to be at. And so as long as, you know, but again, like we were, we were saying, it, you don't know who's gonna be in each role, and they're gonna do things differently each time, so as long as the structure is there that you can find it and follow it, um, I think that would work.
Does the present structure help you at all, in, pardon me? Does the present structure he- in the charter help you at all, in, in giving you the guardrails that you need?
Well, I don't really look at the charter that much anymore, so.
Oh, there you go.
I mean, I know, I.
So, so, following up about your role, the charter doesn't say much about the difference, or different responsibilities, or authorities, or that's of the chief elected official, as opposed to the rest of the Board of Selectmen, is there something you'd like to see on that subject?
I, I don't know.
You can get back to us on that, if you're not sure, how's that for a scapegoat?
Things you see that are problems, cuz I can see with, as a town manager changes, it could, and the chair changes. Because some person may be much more directive, and want to have control over certain things, and other people don't, and you could shift, but it's not clearly defined.
Steve just reminded me that the last Charter Revision Commission talked about giving the first selectman fifteen percent of the town manager's salary. And since, for the last eight years, the first selectman stipend is ten thousand dollars, it's never changed. And although some council manager forms a government, the first selectman, mayor, chair gets zero. So, we're ahead of the game there, people are jealous when I say I get ten grand. That is something, um, you know, to show the value and the amount of time that you put into this job, whether it's physical time or just mental time, right? Cuz you represent, you're here to be stand up for the town. More than the, the town manager is providing the services that we are there to do, but people look to you, you're the one who's gonna get elected or not. So, anyway, Steve told me to bring up the money.
He just crossed the taxpayer's.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing, what, what strikes me with what you're saying is there needs to be a clarification, you're listed as chief elected officer. The town manager is listed as chief executive officer and chief administrative officer. Some of the towns that I've looked at, the first electman, first select person is the chief executive officer. The town manager is the chief administrative officer. So, I think that where you're going with what, what I'm hearing you say is there should be maybe a better delineation, and the first select person should be the chief executive officer.
So don't.
And the town manager should be the chief administrative officer.
So I don't know if I'm saying that, I'm, I'm saying it's, it's an option.
Don't really put words in your mouth, I'm just saying, that's what I, that's what in my mind, I'm envisioning, where that gives the first select person more clearer lines of authority. And it's still working together, it's still working together, it's not saying, but it's, it's, you know, a, a better way of defining what the role is. Uh, and you don't have to, we're gonna have a lot of discussions during that, but one thing I wanna point out is, we did get letters from people last time, as well as people who spoke. And this gets back to, I think, one of the very parts of, of my questions is, did the Board of Selectmen discuss this particular issue? And it's, the feedback we got was that we should return to, I'm quoting here, we should return to the first selectman style of governance, with an elected, full-time, well-paid, more than fifty thousand dollars, first selectman, and a professional COO or chief administrative officer. And, you know, that, that would be, I'm not sure I agree with going back to the first select person, okay? But I think making the role more the chief administrative officer, and giving the first select person more chief executive officer is a way of actually being more responsive to the voters, because right now, the town manager is not responsive to the voters. They don't have to be. All they have to be responsive is to three people on the Board of Selectmen. Cuz they'll never get fired if they keep three people happy. So, anyway, that's, that's all.
I just, can I just rebut that? I, I don't know if.
No, you're not.
If I'm really out of time, I really have to get to one thing. So, um, I guess the, the, you know, ideally, right? I think that might have been where the town could have gone, right? And, and we didn't go there. So, the town, so what that would do is, you know, the buck would stop here, right? And then the town, you know, would be, I, people would report to the first selectman or the chief administrative officer. Canton has that, right? That's what they do right now.
Other towns have that.
Yeah, but Canton is the closest one that I, I know, know about. The only thing is, and I think part of what you guys did on the first Charter Revision, and maybe ran into, is will it be, and will you be able to get people to run for that office if you're, part of your job is thinking about it more at night, and being the overall responsible person, rather than somebody who is a paid, you know, MPA professional, right? Those are the questions, I think, that you'd have to look at, like, are there, is there enough, are there enough people out there dedicated who want a little bit higher level job in the, oh, chief elected, chief executive, who can take on more? And are they out there and willing to run?
But if the lines of responsibilities are clarified, more delineated, isn't it easier to get candidates potentially knowing what that expectation is ahead of time? And it, having the, cuz Bob has referred to this, that there's town managers that have been in positions for thirty-some years. I, as a taxpayer, have not elected that person, okay? So there needs to be some transparency in terms of, I, as a voter, any of us, elect people to represent us. The town manager has to administer those policies, but we have to, I think, I think the clarity in what these metrics are, that they're, they're working under, will help guide this conversation a little bit more, and maybe give some more clarity to what the role of first selectman or chief executive officer should be.
I think she's saying that you limit the pool of potential people, though, by doing, like, if you expand the role too much, then you're, you're.
May, maybe, or maybe not.
No, no.
When, when you speak to electors, what's the gist that you're getting from them?
From?
From them on the, the style of government, if anybody speaks to you about it at all.
Yeah, no, I mean, I have friends, and I've talked a lot of times.
You don't have friends.
I, I have friends at CCM and CROG, other mayors, other first selectmen, other chairs, right? A lot of them I've talked to who were in the same role as I am, as the chief elected, with the chief executive. And when I first came into office, a lot of them helped me see really what the situation should look like, right? So I wasn't crazy, and they did give me input and advice. I think, you know, I think some of them are happy to be the chief elected official. I guess, a- again, it depends on the relation, I keep saying this, it's the relationship between the chief elected official, the chief executive officer, and the, and the Board of Selectmen all working together. And if you all work together well, there's no problems.
I'm gonna have to answer that. That's a good answer. So I'm gonna ask a question that.
This is so much harder than I thought.
Well, you're on the hot seat.
Oh, my god.
I'm gonna ask anybody in this room. Does the way things currently work, cuz I, that has been the rumor around, that the way it currently is works for Simsbury and other people, I wanna ask, or do we go back and totally get rid of a town manager? That has been posed by, I mean, I got friends.
Two.
But, I mean, I think, eh, eh, it, it, it behooves us, and it's our duty to look at all the options, but we like to hear from people who have been in the mix of it. And again, I go to Lisa, who has been in a different position years ago, as first elect without a town manager. I look to people who've been involved in towns for years. Does it work for Simsbury?
And for those of us who are immigrant, and we have no, no ties to the town, except for the ties that we are building right now.
Yeah, yeah.
This would be something that we'd be interested in knowing, you know, what are people saying, what do they think about it?
Well, I, I, I'll just answer again. This term, I've, I've enjoyed my role, okay? And I've grown into my role a little bit, so I have a collaborative board, and um, me and Mark have been good partners. And I can say whatever I want, I think, to Mark, without ramifications, and without being anybody else on the board stepping in behind me or anything like that, that's being perfectly honest. So, I'm relatively content where I am, but in my stage of life, right? I'm content with the, my role here and doing what I'm doing.
But, this charter, it needs to live, being a really beyond.
I know, I've been saying, so I don't know.
So, that's not what she is.
I, I'm just saying, I, I don't know who, what, if people are out there. I, I'm just saying what I think for this role.
Well, I think that maybe.
Yeah, don't we appreciate that?
You know?
But, I mean, do you think, in your experience, you've. But, I mean, do you think, in your experience, you've had a, oh, you've had two different town managers' experience. No matter who's in that position, does that work? Do you think it works for Simsberry? And, and maybe I'll ask other people. I mean, I have been asking people that I know and I've gotten a pretty good mix of some people think it doesn't work for Simsberry. And it's our charge to decide. I mean, I guess I don't know for the baby out with the bathwater, but we've had a lot of growing pains in the past seven years.
Yeah, we have.
And are we still growing in the right direction, I guess? And that's our charge is. And we need, we need as much input from people who have lived through the growing pains to say, this does not work. At some point, you have to say, no. And I don't know, that, I'm, I'm throwing it out there.
So just because we've got two other boards to get through, I think that it's been very helpful, but maybe if we can ask for more information regarding what the town manager's contractual roles and their review role, roles are. What you think the first selectman's role should be? Like what should you be involved in? And how the reporting of things should be happening, so there's transparency. I think that the thing that keeps coming up in a lot of these public comments and conversations that we're hearing from the public is really transparency in government.
Yeah.
And, um, making sure that everything down to the minutes are reflective of the conversations that are happening. That things are, are recorded, that there is collaboration between boards and commissions. So the information flow is transparent, has come out a lot in these conversations, so.
So by, by you saying that stuff though, the, I would say, I would love to be the person in charge of all that. Like to make things happen that I see that aren't happening as fast as I want them to happen. So I'm, I'm answering both, both sides of the, the fence, right? A, a, as a, I've been a manager, I've been a leader. I like being able to get people to do stuff that I wanted to get done and they would get it done as a team and they would deliver it. I, I don't, I have that to some extent, but I don't have full responsibility because the staff does not report to me, right? So I can't.
Right, but I, like, I, personally, I look at it as like a corporation, okay? There's a board of directors with the chairman.
Yeah.
And they set the policy and the direction for the company. And then the staff, the CEO implements all of that, right? So it's not dissimilar to that, where there's defined roles and who can do what. I don't think the chairman of a board ever wants to have, sit down and do reviews of department heads.
Right.
Or direct them to do it. What you're doing is communicating the information to the chief administrative person to implement all of that company-wide, right? So everybody has the same mission and vision for the town because it's coming from the people that, that were elected by the taxpayers. And then it, it trickles down that way, right? But I, I think what we're, what I'm hearing is that there needs to be more defined responsibilities within those titles.
Yeah, but like I said, I've always said, there's, the lanes are not very well-defined in the charter. Maybe that was by design, I don't know, but they're not.
It was not. You guys were there. It wasn't, the last commission didn't spend a lot of time on that. It was more, let's get the structure in place, let's not change so much that the town recoils from it and revisit it as it goes. And I think that brings us to today, where, um, this commission's being asked to revisit the delineation and the articulation between the two roles, basically. Without diminishing the town manager's role so much that we won't get good candidates who want to be a town manager, they don't necessarily want to be a chief administrative officer.
They should burn without blowing it up.
Yeah, I think the difficulty in getting things done is because there's the accountability.
Those things happening isn't defined one.
No, I just, I think there's other priorities. We do ask for things and we do, we do put in things that we want to happen, but there's other business of the town. So ours is prioritized, but if there's a pressing contract, you know, nobody's gonna fix the website for me, right? So there's other business that we don't really manage that happens behind closed doors.
I mean, one of the things that was so helpful when we lived together was when Lee Erdman came on board. Lee has forty years' experience being a town manager, chief administrative officer. Large city, city of Hartford, town of Weathersfield. He knew what he was doing.
Yeah.
And he righted the ship.
Yeah, yeah.
And sort of showed the board of selectmen that, as written, it could work so long as, um, the town manager recognized his or her role. And not just a formal role, the informal role. This will never be, I keep thinking, you can never make it paint by numbers. It's always gonna be some kind of impressionist painting. It's always gonna be blurry, uh, a little bit. And it's always, always, always gonna come down to whether the personalities work together. And we've all worked various places. I don't care what your structure is, you've gotta have a right fit between the leadership team.
So I know we're not supposed to talk, but she put a question out there that asked us. And I just wanna, it wasn't just you guys, Lee Erdman was out there for the people in the town too. And that made a difference as well. He was available to us.
Well, I don't wanna comment or something.
Yeah, I'm not gonna comment on him yet.
I know, but I'm, I just, but she was.
I can talk to you afterwards and tell you why that.
Yeah, yeah, but I just.
So if we could just ask you to go back and have Franklin give us some more information about what commissions and board, boards are, are functional or, you know, how that is all working.
Okay.
By going to your liaisons to those.
Okay.
What the town manager's responsibilities are that he's, he or she has reviewed on versus what's in the contract, you know, I mean.
Because all we have is the charter.
All we've got is the charter. And what the first selectman slash potentially chief elected officer's role should be. That would be helpful for this conversation.
Okay.
I know that's a lot, but.
It is.
I'm sorry. It's really the crux of the beginning of all this conversation, right? Is it working and what's not working? How do we fix it?
Okay, so I know, I know I have to stop, right? But I, I, I do, I have two more things to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I, I'm gonna just, um, the impression out in the public, I think a lot of that was if we had had a Lee Erdman from day one and there were, there was guidance of, of an experienced person in the role to introduce Simsberry to the town manager form of government. I think, I don't think we'd be sitting here talking about it. I think they made the decision and if that form had come to fruition with a thirty-year veteran or twenty-year veteran who knew how to navigate the waters of the elected officials and the boards and the town. I think people would might have a different opinion. Um, the other topic that I'm not gonna get to here, because I have to turn this over to Lisa, but I would like to talk about at some point and it's a key item, is the directing staff item in the charter.
Yes.
And, you know, if we want to do that another time or something like that, but that is a, um, just that needs to be elaborated or gone rid of, and I can add context to that, but that is up for interpretation by whoever is the town manager. And it can be abused and it is, the staff, the board of selectmen and the first selectmen should be able to work with department heads to help them navigate a policy, not order them to do it, but to get input. Things like that. There has to be some relationship there. So. But I can send you what else I had on my list if you want, because I had other stuff.
Yes, plus we want that. Yes, I mean, if there's additional comments that you want to submit, Frank, just send them to Franklin and he then gets it to all of us.
I have other recommendations, um, around the board of selectmen slash first selectmen.
And we'd also, you know, we asked you to speak here, but we want to encourage the other selectmen, select persons to submit, um, their thoughts and comments as well. Um, because it's important to hear from everybody.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm one voice, so I have my own experiences and others don't.
Right. I mean, in the interest of time, we started with inviting the chairs because we're the heads of the boards, because there's a lot of them.
A lot of members.
But, yeah, but I know the first thing we had, we figured board of selectmen, board of finance and board of ed are so crucial for us to get any further into this. To get from the experts, you know? No, no offense, eating disability committees, tiny, you know, board of selectmen, you guys see everything. You guys see A to Z and have gone through a lot and that's why we need your expertise. What has worked, what's not working. You know, a lot of the stuff you said in here even later, you know, some of the stuff that needs to be cleaned up, we gotta do that. Because it's less confusing and I think having the roles is gonna be even more important going forward, whoever's in those positions. So I appreciate your input in all of this.
And we're happy to have you back. We just wanted to get the three, those three boards started because you're going to. We can say goodbye on.
It was, it was helpful in some regard.
It was very helpful, so thank you.
No, no, we have a lot of questions.
So, um, we're gonna move on to Lisa Habner, who's the chair of board of finance. Who we received from Franklin, um, a document that is very lengthy, so.
Thorough, I think is a good word.
Very, very thorough. And she wanted to submit this because.
It was too long.
It was too long, too long, but because of time constraints, yeah. So, yours?
Yeah, so, hi. Thanks for having us here. It's, we really appreciate everything you guys are doing and it's so impressive to listen to you guys speak. It's an exciting, um, I mean, really, you're framing democracy and what an exciting time to be doing this, so. I think it's awesome what you're doing. Um, I did submit it. I don't know if folks have had a chance to read it. I understand it was submitted as a PDF. But I submitted it actually as a Word, so you can get rid of the comments.
I was like, wow.
Franklin redo it so that you can do that. What I was trying to do, my goal in sort of offering this was to, uh, offer recommendations to better ensure we have a system in place to fairly and efficiently manage the finances of the town. Checks and balances and protects the taxpayers. That's sort of my guiding principle. And within that, we're lessening obstacles to oversight, ensuring checks and balances, access to information. Huge, huge. I cannot tell you how important that is, especially in the change of government. Transparency and provide, um, to the elected board of finance, some mechanisms to meet its obligations under the current charter. And after hearing what you said, Wendy, I think another thing unrelated to the board of finance is it's so important. We have multiple elected boards and they all depend on the town manager to staff it. So there has to be some protection in the charter. The town manager adequately staffs it. It has to be budgeted appropriately so they can staff it. You can't say, here, you're an elected board. I don't have staff to come to your meeting. You're an elected board. I don't have staff to do the research that you need to do your job. So that's a huge, sort of broad thing. I'm related to the board of finance, but related to the board of finance because we're one of those ones. So I, there are a lot of things in there that I have. I don't know if there are areas you want me to address or how you want to proceed. I can go through.
Lisa, I, I apologize. I did not have a chance to read the whole document. Could you summarize it?
We'll be delighted.
Okay. So I did, you know, when you did get a chance, I, I did actually put in a summary document, but it's long. So the summary is actually long. But I guess what I've sort of broken into is, um, a couple of key areas. There are multiple, obviously, it's a twenty-one page document, so there's a lot in there. Some of it is very technical and minor, like language that provides flexibility of the Connecticut general statutes. Changes the start date of the fiscal year. You want some flexibility in there. Our charter says it starts on July one. Legislature's been talking about changing the start date. You don't want a charter that conflicts, so just put in, or as by law. So little things like that. And then some of them are really about checks and balances. And I'll sort of lead off with sort of how it was and how it is. When I, when we had, I guess I'll use me as an example, because I was the first selectman on the other one, so apologies. It's okay to use the I, but it's speaking broadly. If there was an issue, um, and I worked with the board of finance, multiple board of finances who really are so talented. But if there was an issue, I remember one chair came to me and said, Lisa, I'm not getting this from the director of finance. And I need this information. Went to the director of finance, why aren't you getting this to him? I'm busy doing this. Stop what you're doing and give this to the, uh, director of finance. And I did that one because I believed in the independence of that board. But even if I didn't, if I was a bad person, if I didn't get them that information, come next election, what's the biggest issue? First selectmen acting like a king. They're not getting the information the elected boards need. Do you, is that the kind of person you want in office? Boom, you're gone. So there was an automatic check and balance there. Now what happens? Not getting something, board of finance. I need something. I go to the town manager. The town manager goes, oh, I got resource. The board of selectmen has me working on this other stuff. We can't get it to you right now. But I need this to do the job. Don't have time to get it free. Go to Wendy. Wendy, our board really, really needs this. Wendy goes, oh, gosh, I'd love to help you, but I gotta bring it to the full board. So now we gotta air it publicly. Can't be resolved if that can't be done, right? Or maybe her full board doesn't support it. Well, now I'm an elected board and can't get the information I need and there's no way to get it, except I, I, there are a few things I could do. I could say, all right, I'm not passing your budget. But is that in the best interest of the town? Or there's an emergency in appropriation that needs to be done. I said, you're not getting it until I get my information. Is that in the best interest of the town? So that's why, the basis of sort of why I put all this stuff together. One of the things that Art mentioned when he came, so I'm just gonna digress a minute. And really give thanks and compliments to the board of finance, because it's not just the board of finance, it's every board. Our board, we have three jurist doctors, one PhD, two actuaries. One person who has chaired multiple nonprofits in town or treasurer of multiple nonprofits in town. These are people who give up their time because they love this community. When we talk about professional government or not professional government, I kind of look at our board and I go, whoa. I look at this table, there are a lot of professionals. So I think that's sort of how I see that. I did, and all this stuff, this, my recommendations are based on what our board has seen over time. And I obviously called them and consulted with them and let them know I was doing this and gave them an opportunity for feedback. Because we have, um, a board that is not only very good, the secure term, please don't change that, gives us time to learn the information, but, um, because of the way it's structured, it's very nonpartisan. And on top of that, the boards that came before us were just as good. And not only that, I said I wouldn't say it, but they're very supportive of all our members. And any one of us can call anyone who has been on a board before and they will sit down regardless of party and say, all right, have you thought about this? Here's an issue. So it's a very collaborative situation. So twenty-two, do you have to get rid of the first selectman former government? You don't have to. Should you get rid of the first sele, go back to what Paul mentioned, do admission? I don't know. So I'm not gonna talk about that tonight. But I do know that there need to be some improvements in checks and balance. We need to, under this new form of government. If, if you want an oversight board. If you believe in checks and balances and there should be a role for oversight of public dollars that's independent, where people can get the information really down. And there need to be some tweaks to the charter, I think. And so I gave a few suggestions in there, twenty-one. But what, but one of the things sort of you think about, you think of the tri-board, we've had mention of the tri-board. Well, so when you think of the board of ed, they manage and the superintendent reports to them, they do the contract, they review it, is it things being done according to what they wanted? Board of selectmen, town manager, are things being done according to they want? Everything flows from there. Board of finance has financial oversight of everything and yet no one reports to them. And so that makes it hard to do the job of oversight. When you have to depend, the board of finance has oversight of the board of selectmen. And we have to say to the board of selectmen and the town manager, can we have this information so we can give oversight over you? Is that, I mean, any, in any world, that's not an oversight thing. So my suggestions were, well, how do you get that oversight? There are two ways. You could put a new position in a comptroller whose job it is to do that, but that's money and I'm just telling you right now, there's no money. Terrible budget season we're walking in. But that is one structure with an adequate report. Or you could do some of the things I've suggested. And one is sort of a double line support to the director of finance treasurer. And have that be kind of like the superintendent and the town manager. And have that be kind of like the superintendent and the town manager. And that, what I think, gives some accountability. My husband calls it, uh, hire, pay and fire. Some participation in that process, get some accountability. I will say, we have wonderful staff, and they've been accountable. But what happens if you don't? There has to be some way to do that. Another thing that I had in there was sort of a big one. I know Wendy may disagree with this. You know, the state statutes, there is a state statute that's actually Board of Finance's hire, do salary and fire. And then there's another section, now you can do whatever you want. You can do either one. But the question is, what roles should the Board of Finance have in the hiring of the town manager? Or the evaluation or the things? I put in there the suggestion that we should be consulted. And the reason why I put that in there is a huge amount of the work, the town manager, is creating the budget, implementing the budget, amending the budget, planning for what happens. And finally, the audit, which our board is independent, never does it. But it's an ongoing thing. People think the budget is one and done. Hooray, we're done with the budget. Nope. Go from creation to monitoring to amending to planning, and then finally to the audit. So it's a, it, it's a continual process. So everything I put in here was sort of related to that. And then in terms of specific things that need to be cleared, well, stop there if anyone has questions on that. And then I've got sort of technical things that just need to be cleaned up.
Bill, can I ask a question?
This rally question for both of you, actually, really. Just as we're going into budget season, how, certainly you guys go through a budget, it's sort of fundamentally different, right? As you just laid out. Can you speak to us about sort of the tensions there? What could help go through that process? Obviously, the, the access to information is a big one, but just didn't know if there's anything more you'd like to add a little color on?
In terms of the interaction of the boards?
Well, really, I'm really with the town managers, really, while this goes along with this.
The most critical thing is access to information in a timely manner. Because we are always asked to give guidance. Well, you can't just, I think it is, right? You want that guidance to be based on data. And sometimes that data is available and it's not released. Sometimes with the, when you have a town manager, you hear the language of power. I, I'm not ready to release it. Well, are you holding it captive? You know? And not to say this town manager, I, I actually have a very good relationship with him. But I've worked with town managers across the state, and you hear the language of power. Will let you know when it's ready for release. And so I think you wanna make sure that there is, and some of that depends on who you have in the office. And like you said with Mark, if I ask him for something, he does get it for me. But you need a charter that makes sure that you can get the information. You don't want it to be dependent on Mark's a good guy, right? The charter needs to preserve that. So that is the biggest challenge we have. I know with, I think Paul, I don't know if you were Chair at the time when we were doing the senior center. Were you Chair then, or was that Barbara? Yeah. And they came to us and said, Lisa, you need to do this more information. And I said, okay, we don't have staff. And Paul said to me, all right, well, we'll get you the resources you need to do it. And it happened very quickly. So there are ways you can do it, if there are. But you also have to make sure that the town manager is budgeting appropriately so they can meet the needs of the elected boards. If you care about your elected boards, if you care about checks and balances, they have to be funded. And so I guess really it's information.
Can I just, I did have, I, in my list, I did have something, a recommendation related to what you just asked. I'm not gonna take these as time, but...
Well, kinda, I suppose do you, so.
So what I was, was gonna suggest is, um, that in the budget timeline, the town manager meets with all the department heads to do their individual budgets, puts the budget together, and then brings it to the board. Um, and then we, again, if we question things, we have to bring in the department heads and ask why something is the way it is. And if it's not there, and if we don't know about it, we never know it was asked for, and maybe it was a priority of ours. So one thing that, and I, again, is, um, could, could that be a combined process? When the town manager meets with the department heads, can the Board of Selectmen be there to hear the needs of each department? So we can more accurately help. And then he can make the decisions, but when we get the budget, we know more than we would have known.
One of the things I have in this opus is a, is a recommendation, actually very similar to that. That there should be language. I have heard of situations where a Board of Finance said, I'd like to ask questions on this budget. Oh, this person isn't available. So there should be language that the Board of Finance, there is already language that, or any other information that the Board of Finance needs. But there should be language in there that the Board of Finance does have a right to question department heads about their budgets. One thing I will say, I know this sounds kind of crazy, but the Board of Ed is its own budget. When we talk about it being a separate thing, it's actually, it, it's actually its own department. So when I talk about departments, I think talk of the Board of Ed as a department. It's a very large, an expensive department, but it is actually a department. And the superintendent always does come, but there should be some way to do that if we need to get that information. It shouldn't just be town manager filtered through the thing. I agree with Wendy on that 100%. And I think that that needs to be in there for both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Generally, department heads do come to our meetings because they're worried we're gonna cut something. There could be a situation where we need information. We need to understand why they're doing this. What is the reason? Where did this, and we should have the ability to address that. And I, I would think as an oversight board, as a citizen, you'd want us to have that, the ability to question. You, one thing I will say about boards, and to Wendy's point, we act as a board. Not one of us individually can just say, I want you here, even the Chair. The Chair can do it, you know, give the, what an agenda means. I'll say to Amy, hey, we're gonna ask for this. Can you be ready for it? I start planning for it because our board's gonna ask for it. But boards always ask as a board, not individually. And that's the power of the, the board. We're not individually asking 800 things. So that is one of the checks on it not being overused, I guess I would say.
Can I ask a million dollar question?
Yeah.
I don't agree with it, but I'm gonna ask it because it's come up in some public comments.
Yeah.
And on Franklin's lovely analysis of similar-sized towns is, the question's been asked, should we have a Board of Finance? I know what my opinion is, but I don't under, I guess I don't understand in the other towns that don't have a Board of Finance, who that function lies with? Is it the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, so here's the thing. So you don't have a Board of Finance. Let's play that out. Well, first of all, I'm not gonna be in this job forever. This isn't about me. I'm at the end of my career. You guys all know that I've been around a while. Like, I'm the end. This is not, you don't, you, you don't, you don't do this job and then run for something else. This is where you're gonna die, right? Right, am I right?
The second time.
Yeah, you're next.
No, but my point is, this is not like a jumping off thing. You know, Board of Finance is not the happy board, where the, you know, everyone else is stuck on the gas, where the tap, the brakes. Right?
Who's Chairman of the Board of Finance at bridge?
Well, whatever, but it, so, and now I've totally forgotten where we were, where we were going with that. So, so if you have that, if, if you don't have a Board of Finance, then you say, okay, do you still want an oversight role? So the Board of Selectmen has their budget that they do, and the town manager implements it. And the Board of Selectmen is overseeing their own budget. Not only that, but they're overseeing the Board of Ed budget. Do you want your Board of Selectmen overseeing the Board of Ed budget? Does the Board of Selectmen wanna be overseeing the Board of Ed budget? In some ways, because they're not overseeing, there's still a Board of Ed, but there's no one looking at how the, they would be having to look at how the Board of Ed is implementing their budget. That's crazy, uh, to me. So I didn't, yeah.
I'm not asking because I think it should go away. I'm asking because it's come up in some public comments. And on Franklin's analysis, there is more towns that don't have it than do.
So I think, you know...
So just trying to understand how...
Yeah, so...
What that role is and whose responsibility it is to have that oversight over that. And so we can maintain our AAA bond rating and, you know.
So I think, you know, you, there are other towns that do do that, absolutely. I think, I would say to you, but what do we want? What works for our town?
I mean, do those towns have like a paid position that...
The legislative body is the fiscal authority.
Right.
Here, the Board of Finance is the fiscal authority. Most other towns, the legislative body, I won't say most, the towns that don't have Boards of Finance, the legislative bodies defined as the fiscal authority.
I would just say, I mean, I don't know if you've had, I mean, you've seen this document. It's not just the work of me. This is based on the input of hundreds, you know, thousands, I mean, people, the chairs before us. I mean, this is built on information that, I'm not starting from zero.
No, and again, I'm not asking the question because I think it's...
No, no, no.
I'm asking the question because I wanna acknowledge the comments from the public and...
I mean, I, I guess I would say the rationale would be that, well, you've got a professional. They're, they can do it. But then you don't have the accountability. I would say, I think the thing that I have found in doing this job is we're not a corporation. We don't have the CEO top-down. We don't, we don't give the town manager, we do appropriations, right? By police, library, Board of Ed, different departments. And we say, this is how we want you to spend our money. We don't say to them, oh, and then after we pass the budget, you can zero out the library and put it all on the police, right? We, we give that to our elected officials because we care about democracy. And this is what the people have chosen and how they wanna spend their money. As the people's representative, representing, each of us represent 25,000. I think, um, our board, and I think anyone who is in that position, that weighs very heavily on people, right? And do you wanna give that authority to someone who's not elected?
Or to me and Steve?
Well, the other thing is, I mean, it's a ton of work. I mean, the Board of Finance, we do a lot of reading. It's, some of it, I mean, I love it, but some of it's drudgery, right?
We saw your book last time.
What you didn't see is the, uh, the Board of Finance memo that they sent to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed that is one of the most detailed things I've ever seen. 24 pages regarding everything you ever wanted to know about finances in the town of Simsbury, including grand list growth, how many apartments we have, uh, where the employment is, who the major taxpayers are. That's the type of work that's done by the Board of Finance that I don't think you would get anywhere else. And I haven't seen Franklin's document, but another document I pulled out from the Office of Legislative Research says, uh, of the towns in Connecticut, 71% have a Board of Finance. So, you know, and some of the towns that don't have a Board of Finance, uh, for the most part are either smaller towns or they, um, that they have, um, you know, they use somebody out of the town, which I think is something. And you hit on the point, is we have a AAA bond rating. You know, what are you gonna change around that to get it better? I don't think you can.
Yeah, I mean, I can...
Sorry for losing my voice here, but...
Honestly, I mean, Paul was one of the great ones.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I am grateful to be able to stand on his shoulders because he built a foundation that we are able to build off of. And that's, I think, the strength of Simsbury. I think really it comes down to you guys. What do you want? What do we want? I guess you as are my representative. And what do we want for government? Do you wanna hire someone to do government for us? Or do you want government as close to the people as you can, but with the professional support so that you can do it? I think about, I'm on multiple boards. When I think of staff, it's like, I need you to get the information that I need so I can make an informed decision. And that means the analysis has to be pristine. The research needs to be excellent. And it can't be in a document 300 pages that doesn't have page numbers. It needs to be organized. No, I'm serious. You think that doesn't happen. It, it absolutely does. So that's, you know, when I think of what I want for government, and the other thing I would say, whatever you think about what's going nationally, this is the training ground for national. If we don't teach people how to do government at this level, how can we expect them to do it at the state level and the national level? So I would say, view this not only as the charter, but this is the training ground of democracy. This is the one place in our country where we can keep government as close to the people as possible. So I, I would just urge you to do that. And, you know, we are so, I mean, look at this, sitting at this table, my God. This is a powerful group. This is such an impressive group. But if I go to any board on our town, I'll say the same thing. Because we have people who give up their time. And I would say that's what has made this community great. Look what's happening, Chris at the PAC right now. I mean, look what's happening at the Board of Ed. Very creative solution going on. We're dealing with a very difficult situation with special education needs and lack of funding. Coming up with tremendously creative solutions there. So I think, you know, I would just say, have faith in your neighbors. But I hear, they won't do it. And I would say, are you doing it? There are people who will do it. And don't shut up the door to them. In fact, welcome them in. Let's make sure they train them. Don't give them the worst thing that can happen, and I've seen this in other towns. And like I said, I do have a good relationship with Mark, is they come in and you hear the town manager like, oh, that could be so bad. They've made a terrible decision. I say, well, what information did you give them? And you look at their agendas, and you understand why they made the wrong decision. So, so can you have a great administrator? Of course. Can you have a great town manager? Of course. Can you have a political town manager? Absolutely. Can you have a political politician? Absolutely. Can you have a professional politician? Absolutely. Everyone at this table. So I would say, don't. It's not one or the other. And when we talk about, did we have professional government before, did we not? Well, guess what? Before we had the town manager, exact same department heads. They suddenly become professional. I don't know. I don't know. So you can have different structures. What's important is that you have someone who could administer the day-to-day things in town, that they have the authority to do so. But that they're also accountable to someone who's elected, who can be thrown, throw the bum out if they do a terrible job. Right? If you, if you care about the structure of democracy still, I mean, I've heard people talk about post-democracy, and that breaks my heart. I hope we're not there. So that's how I view it. But everything in there is sort of there. Can I get to just a few specifics? Because there's some really boring stuff that I think you guys need to fix. One of the things that, um...
Do the page number.
I don't know. I didn't put my page numbers in there.
There's a, there's page numbers, I think.
There are, of course there are.
So, so when you take us through the recommendations that you have, you know, the granular recommendations, one of the things that I'd be interested in knowing is, um, you know, we have the AAA bond rating. We have the experience on the board. So, you know, what is working really well that you, you feel absolutely we need to perfect? And then tell us what that is so we don't throw that out in some sort of equational thing that we put together.
Well, I say, the first thing that is working really well is the six-year term stagger. Because it gives them the opportunity, do not change that. Because it gives the opportunity. It takes two years to understand the budget. And so when you're elected on, you've got people with you who have been at least two years, and some who've been on four. And so, so don't change that. It's crucial, and it also keeps it nonpartisan. What's working is an incredibly talented, uh, board that, we have every tool in the toolbox we need. I forgot to mention, we also have a state expert on pensions on our board. So, I mean, so I would say, don't do away with that. And then there's that. And, I mean, the thing that I would say is, don't take away the strength of your community who wanna participate in government. Protect that with your life. And protect access to information. Make sure that there is enough information, because we can only make as good decisions as the information we're given. And to Wendy said, sometimes you don't even know the information's there. It's not just what you ask for. Staff needs to, and I would put that in, what was, what does, what needs to be in the charter, you asked to protect that. Staff needs to proactively get the elected boards the information they need. They might not know to ask for it. But they, if it's relevant to the board, it needs to be given to them. That's the most important thing, I would say. That's the most important thing, I would say. And then the changes I put in here, I guess, you know, little things like that. I mean, one little thing in there, it's minor, it doesn't have to be in the charter, but it's happened so many times where all of a sudden staff puts out the dates of budget meetings that we're holding without checking with us. I'm like, ah, we can't do that. I don't have a core on that date. And so little things like that are just easy to fix. I don't know that that needs to be in the charter. But, but, but there are also things that you think about, what can you control? What, what is our role? And the role of them is to do financial oversight. And to do that, you need information and you need research and you need support. To Chris's point, a lot of us, you know, work, some work full-time. I've got a mom who's going through cancer. There are different things that are going on in people's lives. We don't have the resources to do all the research. But if you have professional government, you hire people to do that research for you. And you get the research you want, not what they want. It can't be like, oh, yes, you're in charge of the annual report. I'll get you a draft. It's like, whoa, we're in charge of the annual report. Let's go over what should be in it and we'll tell you. And then, yeah, that kind of thing. There needs to be some connection there.
Lisa, could I add something to what you're saying? A lot of people on the board, the commission who don't know me, that I'm a member of the Board of Finance, so I'm. I'd be happy to reduce the term.
Did I hear ten years?
As to the question of what's going well, there's something that also relates to the question of whether we should have a Board of Finance at all. And, and so, two years ago, a lot of you may remember, we had a, a, a revaluation and we, oh, we had it. And the, a very challenging budget year and one of the largest tax increases we've had in many years. And before the budget was completed, but when it was first proposed, there was an article in the, in the Hartford Current saying that the average household in Simsbury was going to get a tax cut of, I forget how many. Hundreds of dollars, seventeen percent, which was the opposite of what was about to happen. And, you know, there's, there's the issue of, of controlling information because, especially in a town like ours, to the extent that there are bad actors, to the extent that someone wants to consolidate power, then control over information is crucial to it. That's how you do it. But putting all that aside, this was just a mistake. And having a separate board with a separate set of eyes to say, no, we're, we're doing the analysis and this is, this is just a mistake. And we sent a letter to the town to try to correct it. That's something that's very valuable. So I think that's something that works well. One question I wanted to ask you though, you know, and I, obviously, I, I saw these proposals and I talked to you about them. And I think they're very good in the, the specifics, which we haven't discussed, about the relationship with the finance director. I think would be very useful. We've been talking mostly about how the Board of Finance can get information from the town, which is less than a third of the total budget. And, and we haven't really come up with any, and, and I know there are, there are legislative constraints about how we can get more detailed information from the Board of Education, which is something that's been troubling me for a couple of years. Do you have any thoughts about that?
So I guess I would say, the information that, there are two types of information. One is the implementation of the budget. And so we do ask for, and we initiated this. We were getting quarterly reports. We now get monthly reports from the town and the Board of Education. The finance director has access to that. By state law, we are entitled to access to the books of the town. So we do have access to that and we do, we do get that. In terms of the other information that you might want, one of the things I think I heard everyone talking about is what metrics do we use in general? One of the things we have been pushing for, and which is why you see some of the metrics in my recommendations, is Government Financial Officers Association. This is like, they actually say, to do good governance, you have to have good metrics. What are you getting for your money? And how do you communicate that? So our job is not just getting information, but communicating it out. And I think, right now, we have really, I work very well with Jeff and Wendy. And I've worked with Matt for many, many years. I was a PTO president liaison to the Board of Ed for many years. So we have a good relationship there. But that becomes then the negotiation of how do you communicate it? So if you look at the Board of Ed's presentations, it's all there. But does it make it to the budget? And that's more mechanical, I think. So I don't, I don't know exactly on that. I do know that having, getting the finance reports and not having to say, hey, can we have the finance reports? Instead of saying, you know, no, we need the finance reports. Can we get them? Amy's been very good and we've gotten very good, but it wasn't always, there are some towns where that's not easy. And you're dependent on, and they give you a finance report and it doesn't tell you anything. You get a finance report and then two months later, you find out you're short. How did we not know this? You gave us this thing. This didn't just come up out of blue. So it becomes a push-pull, which is why I'm, you know, recommending this sort of report. Because the treasurer does have access to the books and we can say, no, we'd like to see this. The other thing we have the power of is the power of the audit. And we can do that annually, but also through departments. Paul, I don't know, do you have thoughts on that?
Well, I think, I think it's important to get information on a, on a monthly basis. And it's also, again, who's, who are you cooperating with? Who's, who's sitting in that seat when you're asking for that information? And I also know that when it was, it was the first select person was elected, we didn't have a town manager. They would always send the finance director to every single meeting because they were responsive to the voters. And we made sure, that was Kevin Kane at the time, he was there all the time. And as chair, I was on the phone with Kevin weekly. I mean, it wasn't just like occasionally during budget season, but it was weekly. He was giving me information. I was asking information. And then we were getting the information to the board on the weekend before our meetings. The meetings are on Tuesday. We would get the package on Friday and I would go through with him. Here's the information we need. Would you please get that? And we would always get that. Board of Ed, Dave Holden, he was the same way. He would, he would get us that information. I never, at once, had to refer to the charter to say, hey, guys, you know, this is what I need. But, a-again, I think it gets back to, we've had seven years now, or six years, whatever it's been. And there are certain tweaks in here, I think, that we need to do to clarify the responsibility and the accountability. And again, that gets back to transparency and who can make sure that they are looking after the taxpayers. And I think that's, that's the board. And I think some of her recommendations were pretty good ones as well.
So that's, so now can I get to bonding? So one of the things that is always, I hate to do this, but it's always a big issue in multiple towns, is the power to borrow money, is the power to commit future taxpayers to pay the bill, right? When you borrow, you're making a promise. So how do you prove that? I think, working with Bob, we've done some work on that. It's gotten much better. But I think the language of the charter could be cleaned up. Generally, how it's done and our past practices, the voters approve. If we're going to do bonding, you say, hey, we're doing bonding at referendum. These are the projects for bonding. Pay attention because you're committing to it for the next few years, right? Two things came up. Should we be able to do that mid-year in a supplemental appropriation? My recommendation is no. Unless it's an emergency, and I put in some language there, because it's a ten-year commitment, it's being done off budget cycle. It's usually less, people aren't paying attention to that. But I think that needs to be cleared up. And the second thing is, who approves it? So if you go, if you do it through the budget process, the Board of Finance has to recommend it. So they have to approve it for referendum. So the budget-making authority, we are that by charter and state law, recommends it, but then the voters have to approve it, right? And I think that that is a very good way to do it. But then after it's been approved, who gets to issue it? And the way we do it in town is we say, okay, it's been approved. Who gets to issue it? Well, usually it's delegated to the finance director and they get to issue it. But somebody has to approve the issuance. And it can either be the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance. My recommendation is that it shift to the Board of Finance. I'm not sure exactly where it is. And here's the reason why. The timing of the debt can affect out-year debt service. We found that out this last time. We went out to bond the issuance in August as opposed to July, one month difference. We were going to save two hundred thousand in the budget and could plan for it. So that's why it's an important, that you differentiate who approves the borrowing and who approves the issuance. Done by town staff, but it should be done transparently because so much money is involved. It could be thirty million dollars there were. If it's squadron, it could be a hundred million. Amy's been very good about consulting with us and we do go through it, but that should probably be in the charter and a lot of towns do have it in the charter. The second thing I just wanted to talk about is appropriations. So this is going to be a little bit tech-don, I apologize, but Schoolhouse Rock days, remember? An appropriation is the legal cap and spending. So let's say the police department, six million dollars. That's the appropriation. It's a number, six million dollars. Within that, there's a budget. There's salary, uniforms, tasers, police vehicles. And that budget equals six million dollars. So six million appropriations, six million dollars. Library, same thing, right? This is so important. We're seeing it play out nationally, right? Who approves the appropriations? The budget-making authority recommends them to the voters. But it's kind of weird, the way we do it. So the Board of Finance approves the appropriations, six million, four million, three million. They also approve the budgets underneath it, right? We have line item approval for every department except the Board of Ed. Board of Ed approves theirs. So what happens after the budget? So we've got an appropriation and we got the budget. Uh-oh, there's a problem, right? Suddenly, there's a huge storm. We're out of sand. Public Works appropriation, five million dollars. But they've only appropriated two hundred thousand to salt. But guess what? They had savings on tar. Could they make the switch? Who approves that? Right now, it is within the department heads. And that's appropriate because it's the same purpose. It's roads, right? Public Works. But if, uh-oh, we're short on salt, library, you don't need to buy those books. We're going to take the books and use it on roads, right? Oh, now we're changing the purpose, right? Who approves that? It needs to come back to the budget authority. Or, oh, roads are bad. Board of Ed, we're taking your money. You can't buy the books. That would be a terrible thing and we're seeing that play out at the national level, which is why our charter, and please do not change that, says, if you're going to change the appropriations, Public Works to Library, you got to get to Board approved. Because this is what the people chose. If you're going to change the purpose of it, if you're going to change within Public Works, road to tar, then the Board of Selectmen can approve it. It's going to change within Board of Ed, we need more books, we have a vacancy thing, Board of Ed. And so it should stay that way. And that's how we do it. So there's talk about, you know, changing that. But that's why it's so important. Because it really goes to what the people want, the purpose of government. And you can envision, why can't the town manager do that? Well, we're seeing this play out on the national level. It's called impoundment. So we've appropriated six billion, or three million to the library, right? The town manager is like, oh, they're doing D E I. Screw that. I'm sorry. I'm not doing that. They can say, I'm just not going to spend the money there. And then, oh, I've got all the savings. I can spend it on buying a tank. That's a change of purpose. You don't want to put that with an unelected official if you're going to change the purpose. That's why you do it. We also do appropriations by individual capital project. Do not change that. So if we say we're going to buy a truck, you're going to buy a truck. You can't say, I'm going to buy a truck. And then, after the budget, I'm going to buy flowers. No, no, no. You can't do that unless you go through the amendment process, right? So those, those are like totally boring, confusing things that are a nightmare and that are very confusing because everyone interchanges appropriation and budget. And, but the good news is, Bob, Bert, and I, and counsel for the Board of Ed have worked on a policy on that. And I think we've clarified it. So you should review the policy. It has cleaned up everything, but do you want to change the charter to reflect the policy? That's up to you. But I did want to bring that to your attention because it was so confusing. The other thing I would say is really pay attention to emergency powers. Emergency powers. Because the charter does permit some spending under, under an emergency that is different than under normal times. So then the question becomes, who gets to declare the emergency? Because you have seen situations, and we're seeing them playing out now, whether you like it or not, where someone declares an emergency and therefore I can spend the money anyway I want, right? There's a lot more flexibility there. But what is the definition of the emergency and who gets to declare it? Although it is unrelated to, it's kind of related to what I'm saying. That is one recommendation. I'm kind of going out of my lane a little bit. I think the first selectman should be the person assigned to declare the emergency with the advice and consent of the town manager and the E O C for that reason. Because you don't want a situation where an unelected official is doing it. E O C is very structured. First selectman never declares an emergency alone. There's lots of support and advice in that. But in an emergency, and I, anyone, Paul was with us in the October storm. Who do the elected officials call at the national level? And at the state level to get the money you need, they call the elected official, even if there's a town manager.
The mic, I was just gonna, I have something in mind related to that because for the micro words that we just had, I wasn't at the table. And I'm not going to second guess, but if we declared an emergency, we might have been open to, to funding, you know, either through FEMA or something. Like the floods, all those towns declared an emergency and they were able to do it. It was a bigger thing. But again, also, the governor called me and offered help. So, you know, just pointing out that.
They used it in our neighborhood.
Yeah, but my point is, I think that goes to, but that goes to, the reason why I bring it up, it does go to appropriations. Who has the right to spend and who is the authority and when you do that? One of the things I did put in, going back to bonding, I put in some language that you can bond during an emergency if you can't, if you need to tap more than fifty percent of reserves for one year. And you can always then bond later, but it does give some flexibility. I mean, you, you think you never use it and then October twenty-eleven came, right? And that was probably a four million dollar hit to our budget. At the time, we had reserves much lower. We were about twelve, twelve percent reserves, ten or twelve percent.
I think we were at twelve. Yeah, we tried to keep it at twelve.
Right. And that was the recommendation at the time. Because we always, that's how we get our triple A. We pretty much follow these things. But now the recommendation is sixteen percent. And so we had to work for many years to make up for what we lost during the emergency and then to get to the newest level. So.
Are you saying the current chair doesn't define who defines an emergency? Is that unclear?
I think, I think that.
It's just a false statute.
But, but there is a section in there in the emergency. Yeah, we have it in there.
We went through this with COVID.
Indra Gandhi did that. She unilaterally declared an emergency, nearly destroyed the democracy. And a lot of people I know have, are still paying for that.
Yeah, so, so when I, who declares it is important. And obviously, the first selectman can be the person assigned to it because it, by state statutes permitted. But our charter does talk about supplemental emergency appropriations. And that's something to, you want to pay a lot of attention to, I think.
Are we talking about the same apples and oranges to some extent? I mean, we have provisions relating to emergency appropriations that may not necessarily be tied to a declaration of emergency under, under the statute.
That's the question I have. I mean, you do want to make sure that the language is clear there. Because we have had, our other towns have had situations where the town manager declares an emergency. It's like, ah, but you had a week. You didn't do anything. You could have called a meeting. Why was that an emergency? So I think that you, I think that can be cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah, well, that's the loophole she took advantage of.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those are, I mean, I think, that's, let me see, what else did I have there? Oh, the timeline of the budget. So the other thing that can happen in a budget is you, you can, you can, like I said, there are really good town managers out there. And there are town managers that I probably wouldn't hire in Sinnesbury. But one of the things, when you think about the leverage of power, and I'm not saying about the individual, but the structure you have. One of the levers of power is to rush to decision. Here's your budget, you got a day, figure it out. So I do recommend a timeline in there that does give a little bit more time for deliberation. It's something we voluntarily worked out with the town manager currently. He, I went to him and I said, look, we can't do this. You can't jam us and have us make a quick decision without us having time to think about it. And so he adjusted the schedule voluntarily. But what if you have a town manager who doesn't? So that's why those dates are important. Seems like, I think one of the things.
Let me ask you a question about that though. I thought I read in the charter that by November thirtieth, the board of finance sets the timeline for the budget?
No, no, that was my recommendation.
Oh, that's your recommendation, that's, okay. Sorry, I'm, there's a lot of documents.
Well, so, the timeline is not, is, but yeah, if you read the whole document, it sets the calendar. So there are deadlines within it, but you still have to coordinate dates. Like, I have to get a quorum, Jeff has to get a quorum, Wendy has to get a quorum, staff has to be available. So it has to be coordinated, but you wanna put that timeline out early because our folks here might wanna come.
Who sets the timeline now?
So it's, it's, I think it's, staff has been doing it, trying to coordinate it. But occasionally, what happens is it gets published and like, ah, we can't make that date. So I think we could do it better, but that's more internal. I don't know that that's malicious, that's just trying to get things out there, coordinating all the boards. But if, if you assign it to the board of finance and you'd staff properly, it can get done by a certain time. If you put it in the charter, it has to be done by this date. And I put in there, has to be done in consultation with the board of ed and the board of selectmen. Then it, it's with the authority that is the budget-making authority. Of course, it has to be done in coordination with staff. But it's just a way to sort of make sure that we've got a timeline that gives the elected boards the time they need to get the information they need and then to have time to think about it. The way the budget works, it's kinda crazy. We start planning on expenditures before we know what the revenue is. The grant list comes in in February. What are the things we've changed on our board and, you know, Paul did it before, but that needed to be changed after he left, was when do we get estimates of the grant list? How can you start your budget without even having an estimate, right? And thankfully, Amy's been really, our director of finance has been good with us and getting us early estimates. And it changed, but it changes over time because it takes a while to get that. But you need to have a starting point. The governor's budget is coming out tomorrow. I'm deep into the budget. I'm just gonna find out what's on the record tomorrow. But as soon as you get that information, everything can change. So if you, if you have a tight timeline on the budget, you can't think about the multiple levers that are moving. So there has to be time to think. And that's one of the things I think our board has been, I mean, I'm privileged to be probably the least intelligent person on the board. We have such great thinkers on the board.
You need to give yourself some more credit.
I see your heart shaking in the head, isn't it?
Yeah.
This from the, the doctor, the PhD. But, but my point is, we have such talent in this town, let them think.
Lisa, how much time is reasonable time?
So I think what I proposed is reasonable. It's reasonable if we're getting the pieces of information we need in a timely manner. That is now happening. It took a lot of negotiation to get that point. You need to get the information as it comes in so that you can think about it. We did not have a long-term model prior, you know, an electronic thing. I actually consulted with Paul, what we need, what should be in there, build upon some stuff Barbara Pettigene did, but.
I'm not leaving, I'm just standing.
I stand.
That's okay.
Chairs are awful.
You can even leave.
I have to dissolve the meeting if she. I'm just in a lot of pain.
Chris, you want this one?
Yeah.
Do you want this chair, it's padded and comfy.
Thank you, I'm happy.
Thank you, Warren.
So.
Keneski, Keneski, and you and I have had conversations about this, but I'll ask you again. You know, the budget process is a little clunky, right? And not anything that you guys are doing, it's because we're so beholden to the state, right? We, 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 we go for what our best efforts and then like on our side, we get this news, we get this bomb dropped on us from the state two weeks ago. Then we're gonna be short four hundred thousand dollars, they're, they're not reimbursing us four hundred thousand dollars. Or we say different way, they're, they're reimbursing us four hundred thousand dollars, less than they did last year. Is there anything in the, in the, in the calendar or the way you're envisioning trying, just the timeline? In, in answer maybe no, but to, to better match up with what the states do. Like you said, we're all deep into the budget and the governor's doing his budget tomorrow, which could completely blow up everything, right?
So I was pulling my hair out the other day and my husband goes, you want certainty? Get out of government. He's like, you're in the wrong business, Lisa.
Actually, I just, I just, if we're gonna look at the, the timeline, I just wanted, you know, this would be an opportunity to.
Yeah, so I think the key is, the governor's also done a good job. We used to not get the governor's budget until the end of February. Try and pass a budget in March without knowing what your revenues are. He's been much better, we're now getting it the first week in February. So this then gives you, you'll have it going into your workshop. He doesn't have it as he, the superintendent and Mark doesn't have it as they're building the needs of the community. The thing about government, I think people forget is like, and this is why we're not a corporation. There's, we, there's no profit here. Everything we spend is because private business can't make a profit doing it. It's not profitable to do roads, not profitable to do schools. So it's what we wanna spend our money on. So you start looking at what we wanna spend. Ideally, like any other budget, you start with, well, how much money do I have? Well, you got unlimited money, I can tax the heck out of you, right? But that, within limits, that's why you have the board of finance who says, well, if you do that, our mill rate's gonna be here, our neighbors are here, our economic competitive's gonna go down, your home price. I mean, that's why we, we look at all the things on that. So it is clunky.
I have a stupid question. Our fiscal year needs to match the state's fiscal year, correct? By state statute?
Yes.
Your thoughts to be courting, I read, my thought too, actually.
Well, I'm just thinking of the logistics of it and.
Well, so, but here's the thing, sometimes the state has introduced legislation to change or start to October so that it's after, because right now, even now, when we do our budget, Paul, remember, our budget will be built on what the governor recommends, well, guess what?
It still has to get voted out.
Yeah.
To the legislature. And sometimes legislative, one year it got really delayed, they didn't even finish till September. And we had to go to the voters and say, here are your taxes.
And then if there's a budget reform that we need to do, that really puts you even more under constraint, I assume.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not, I'm gonna tell you, budgeting and if you want certainty, this is not the job for you, right? This, it's chaos, it is total chaos. We found out, like Jeff and I found out the other day, oh, hooray, they're gonna give us a lot of funding for special ed, yay! And twenty minutes later, except it's coming in two years, right? So that's what the budget is like. And so what you, the most, which is why Wendy's been really good about getting us information from C C M and CROG. People are getting information from all over the place. One of the things our board discovered, and I think we were the first in the state to discover it, is when those, they changed the valuations of cars. Your car taxes are gonna go down, well, guess what happens? We, we're getting less revenue from cars. What does that do to the grant list? Grant list went down eight hundred thousand dollars. And like, is this happening in other towns? Other towns, we put out a notice, nobody got back to us, nobody looked at it. Well, now they're starting to come in.
Now they're looking at it.
We're seeing this across the nation. So now, the next question we've asked is, okay, and this is one of the things Jeff, Wendy and I are looking at, okay? So now we know this is bad. But people are gonna save money on their cars. So are they gonna save five dollars? In which case, bad, bad, bad. Are they gonna save three hundred on their cars? Ah, maybe not so bad. You don't know. That's the analysis we just put forward today. I was talking with the finance director, I said, we're gonna need that before our next meeting. Because that can change the whole budget discussion, right? And how do you do that? I mean, it is, it is, you are literally juggling eight hundred, and which is why it takes a village to do a budget. Because something will come up or you could get a child who has tremendous needs at the last second that you hadn't planned for and you gotta take care of that child. Or something happens like a pandemic and how do you deal with that? All these things happen. So the key, that's, which is why information flow is just critical. And time to think about it in a chaotic world. You never have enough time, right? But that's why we worked with Bert and Art to do long-term planning. We now have better ideas of where the spikes are gonna come in spending. Where might we be lower on grant list projections? We're starting to incorporate all that.
Is that, is that a recent phenomenon, the long-term planning? Or has it always been?
All, all boards have done it. I mean, I think Paul started it, Barbara Pettigene worked on it, I think you started it, right?
No, the, you mean the five-year plan?
Or the budget planning over the long term, yeah.
We started, we started that.
Yeah. So we built, you know, each, each board comes and builds upon the previous boards. We, we worked with the finance director, you know, technology's a little bit, Paul first started. But, but now we have an interactive thing where you can play with the numbers. And any, any citizen can play with the numbers and you can start and move it. It's a little bit more, less dependent on outsourced, you can start to move it. So each, each, I think, new board works upon the work of the old board. And you, you don't start from scratch, that's how progress is made, so.
So Paul, did you ever have to refer to the charter when you, when you created that new process?
We, no, we really didn't need to do that within, within the charter. I mean, it was, there was, the, the charter gave us enough because we were, and it's still in the charter, that the board of finance is the budget-making authority, right? And a lot of those powers are either in the charter or they're by state statute. So that's what we pretty much relied on. And, and as well, there was a lot of negotiations as well with the two boards. And working with, with the finance director. And spending a lot of time and saying, you know, this is, this is what we need and this is how we have to do it and what we have to do to plan. I mean, there are a, a lot of things out there that she hasn't even touched on with respect to, you know, what's your, what's your, what's your capital plan? All right, how are you doing that? What's capital not recurring, how do we deal with that? We would pretty much, what, what was our debt policy, which is still out there? And the debt policy basically said, we're gonna do nothing but a ten-year bond unless there's something really, we did fifteen years for the high school. Everything else was ten, okay? Our, our debt policy would won't be more than seven percent of the budgets on our debt. So principal and interest, even with the, the board of ed and board of selectmen, has to stay within seven percent. So those are policies that the board adopted and reuse. So they, they may be changed any part of the time. But those are the things that allowed us to, you know, stabilize the pension when we had a financial crisis. Those are things that allowed us to, you know, continue to fund additional things as they came, like Latimer recently done or, or when we did Tara Philp and the junior high school, because you could plan, because you know you're dropping off your debt here, so you can, you can do that. And you worked with bond counsel. You know, you really worked with bond counsel to make sure that you're gonna get that triple A bond rating. And one of the things that we could do that would negatively impact that triple A bond rating and give us the lowest interest rate possible as we, as we go out there. So those were the, those are the things.
So I have two.
Hopefully, I answered your question.
Yes, you could, thank you. I have two charter-related questions, two. Do we have a, and we may have gone over this one when we were reading the charter, do we have a percentage of voters that have to approve the budget?
No.
And should there be?
Or do you think there should be?
And do you think there should be a mechanism in the charter that, that the board of finance has to have, to review the five-year plan, these plans?
So we.
On a regular, like, should that be in the charter or, you know?
So there is a requirement that the town manager submit a five-year capital improvement plan. And the reason why that's so important is just what Paul was saying, because that impacts, those are usually funded by debt. And so you do wanna make sure that you're not gonna have an out, your spike that you don't know about and you can't plan for. I mean, sometimes there are spikes in it, but you wanna plan for that. In fact, we're doing that this year, we'll be using reserves because there's gonna be a little spike in debt service. Until we get through the spike, we'll be using reserves to smooth that. But we knew about it and planned for it because of the long-term planning. I, you know, I, I think I did have there, like, I did add some language about what happens if the budget fails that I suggested adding. You know, there is a failure of the board of finance to approve the budget. Suppose the board of finance doesn't approve the budget, what happens? The current charter says, okay, you don't approve it, it's whatever went to hearing, that's gonna be the budget. Failure of citizens to approve. All right, so we put it to referendum, fails, fails. It says, if it fails after two years, what happened, I mean, two tries, what happens? Well, the current budget continues until you pass one. And so you just keep going at it. What happened in Avon?
Well, I was gonna say, Avon.
So what happened there is it failed three times. And their charter said, okay, if after it fails three times, then the town council sets it. So it failed three times and the town council said, okay, let's increase the budget. So, so I don't think that's good. But I think this is actually workable. And part of the reason why this works is we have been able to communicate, well, one, among three boards, I think we actually have a pretty good communication line there. But communicate with the public and explain very difficult concepts. You know, Paul was great at that, I think Bert and Art are particularly strong at that. I, as in case you might have noticed, I tend to be in the weeds. But then how do you pull it out and talk to the public and explain like what happened with the rebound? Yeah, your mill rate went down seventeen percent, oops, your taxes are going up five percent. How do you explain that? That is really hard to do. And that's why it takes a village to do that. I think that's one of our strengths and it's one of our strengths because we have citizens doing this who know their neighbors and know what their neighbors need to hear it. So I think that is a huge strength and the ability to communicate is a really important. One of the things I think that is gonna be a huge challenge for this town and all towns is we don't have a local newspaper anymore.
Yeah, we don't have.
How do we communicate about what's happening in town? And who controls, if it's coming from the town, who controls the information that's going out? We're seeing this play out on X, who controls that information?
Well, that even came up on our public audience, how some people weren't aware of even these meetings.
Well, because it's, yeah, I mean, that, that's part of some of the stuff that we have to talk about overall.
So I don't, that's one I don't know the answer to. But you wanna pay attention is who controls, who controls not only the information, but who controls the communication? And you'd probably want an elected official to have a role in that. Whether it's, I mean, it should probably be the first selectman. Because if chief elected official, you would think that's a primary job. And it's the kind of thing, if she communicates poorly, see ya, right? But she has to have the authority to do it. And I don't know, that's one thing you should think about.
But just to go back to my question in terms of how we're defining responsibilities of town manager and first selectman and the charter and who, because there's responsibilities for the board of finance in the charter, should, should it be clarified that they're the body that is going to have review, you know, debt policies and bonding, like, like, do we have to specify that in the charter?
So I don't, I don't think you, because state law, I mean, there's a handbook, I put a link in there, there's a handbook for.
Another book, please, no.
But there's a lot of information out there. But I did put in there, one of the things I did add in there, you know, I restructured the section to, because that's what they do, but to coincide with the phases of the budget, right? There's the creation, monitoring, amending, planning, and then the auditing. There's the creation, monitoring, amending, uh, planning, and then the auditing. But one of the key duties of a Board of Finance, of any Board of Finance, is the policy. They're the policy, uh.
Well, and that's why I bring it up, because if, if we're trying to define what the town manager's role is, what the first selectman's role is, and the Board of Finance has a role.
Page eighteen.
Okay.
Turn to page eighteen. Yeah, so I did start, what I did is I took every, because some of our responsibilities are like in eight hundred places, they're in the statutes, they're in other parts of the charter. And so I just put them all in one place. And I just compiled what we do.
Well, and I get back to the point of, if we're more transparent in the charter about whose responsibilities are whose, and not referring, we refer to the statute, but then clarify that, it's clearer for everybody who's doing what and who's responsible for what, so you know how to measure performance.
So I'm gonna say something.
Does that make sense?
It makes total sense, and you are totally in line, is something called the Global Initiative on Financial Transparency. And they say just that. You can't just have good finances, you need to be able to communicate it, which means, don't put paragraphs like this. Break them up into A, B, and C. It's not being overly picky, uni. It's, it's about making it easy to read. Can you read it? And will it be a usable document? This is a living document. I know, some people don't use, I've had to use it. I call Bob all the time. Bert and I and Art, our whole board goes back to the charter, okay, what do we need to do? That happened recently with ARPA, right? There were all these supplemental appropriations, and it was going, going. I was like, wait a minute, don't we have to go to referendum at some point? So we're scouring the thing, and there are all these supplemental appropriations. Yes, it was being funded by a federal grant, but guess what? Appropriations don't care about the revenue source, it's the expenditure. And we had broken through the charter threshold. And it was our board that said, stop. We need council involved. We're gonna need to hold a special referendum. Because we are now through, because at that time Latimer needed an extra appropriation, and we had the ARPA appropriations. And you just had to pause, tap the brakes, stop. And so, um, do we, do we use the charter? This, I would say our, our board right now probably uses the charter more than anyone else. And it is really hard to read it. I mean, I, what I do when I read the charter is I have to, I copy and paste it, and then I pull it out and break it into categories to make it easier to read, because you're trying to read it, it's, it's, it's chaotic. So I think anything you could do in that way would be helpful. And it's not just about making it neater, it's about making it accessible to the public.
Right.
Let me, let me just clear something up about policies. I mean, we've set several policies with respect to, uh, the debt limit and, and, and the level of reserves. And each year we communicate those policies to the other boards as they prepare their budgets to say, these are the parameters we're gonna use to examine and evaluate your budgets. But I, I don't understand that the boards are necessarily bound by those parameters, except in the give and take between or among the various boards. Do you see that differently?
It's guidance, but they will not be surprised when we say, nope, you can't borrow that amount of money, because we're not gonna do it. I mean, the reason why we have a triple A bond rating is because the Board of Finance taps the brake and says, nope. It, it's sort of the guardrail, seeing that play out at the state level. Guardrails lead to strong fiscal, long-term sustainability. They also are hard, sometimes you wanna spend the money, you gotta need. How do you do that? We have multiple budgets that we do, there's the operating budget, and then there's the capital budget. You have.
You're not advocating that we turn those guidelines into some kind of hard and fast.
No. No, I, I think we do them exactly right where we are.
Can I just respond to somebody who received, just this, I don't know if this helps you or not, but somebody who gets received that guidance. And hopefully this gives you some assurance. We take that very seriously, extremely serious. We, we take it almost as, uh, maybe a required, whatever you wanna call it. At least I have had several conversations already about the guidance. Where, I'm not sure you do that as well. So, and my, my point is, I want the group to understand that although it's technically guidance. Jeff, can you just give me a second?
Yeah, sorry.
We, 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 we take it extremely seriously.
No, I didn't mean to suggest otherwise. I just mean that it's part of a, a political process between the boards. It's, and, and that's, that's appropriate, it works.
Yes, so will we.
But if it's, but if it's put in the charter, then it's harder to change.
Right, exactly. And it does need to be flexible, because there are times when you do need to make an adjustment. There's a global pandemic, you need to have some flexibility. But you also, one of the things we're looking at is, no, we can't do this amount of borrowing, or we're gonna lose our triple A, and guess what? Our costs are gonna go up, which means your operating budget's gonna have to go down, which means you can't offer the same services. So those are the kind of things we look at. You know, we have some lines in the sand we won't cross. Don't give me a gimmick, a one-year spike using one-time funding to fund your operating budgets, that's gonna disappear and leave a hole in the sand, that will not happen. So there are things that we're, we give hard guidance on, but you're right, it's part of the political process. You wanna leave that out of the charter, I think. But the right to develop financial policy is clearly a right among any town that has a Board of Finance, that's what they do. That's a big part of budget development, budget planning, budget guidance, and actually, budget implementation. So it's a really important thing. I will say, I'll brag for not only our board, but the boards that came before us, we just got our triple A hundred, and guess what they cited, our policies, is one of the main reasons. So, and it builds, like, each policy, I didn't wanna say it's our board, because we build upon the work of the previous boards, and we built upon the work of the previous boards. It's been a really, it's kind of a neat, if you like, this kind of stuff. No, but I mean, this, I mean, that's just why Simsbury is great. People have put in tons of work, and then the next board comes in and they can build upon that work. They're not coming in like, oh, what were you guys thinking? It's like, oh, or the world has changed. I think we have a capital reserve fund that Paul didn't have access to, we created that after him. It's like, oh, you know, there's always something you can innovate. And the law changes, it permits you to do it. But you're always building on the people who came before you. And we're really fortunate, because we have a great community that we can build upon.
Do we know what percentage of towns have that triple A bond rating?
Yes, true, Franklin, it's on his spreadsheet.
It is?
Yeah.
No, Miss Appel, it's not as many as you think, it might be on that one.
Yeah, but well, that's just a few towns he listed. I meant like, of all the towns in Connecticut.
We, we did.
No, these are just similar-sized towns.
We did get that report a while ago, I don't remember, do you remember? It's not as many as you think.
No, we put it in the letter last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
It's a few dozen.
Really, it's, it's minor.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a kudo to, and we've had it for now, I don't know, twenty years, right, Paul?
As long as I've been.
Yeah.
As long as I've been paying taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we, you know, it's, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna lie, this is, we're in crazy time right now, and I think, you know. But that's why it's so important we maintain our guardrails right now, because we're, we're, we're in a time of, I think, great uncertainty, and how does that play out? But, you know, I, one of the things Paul and I have had the opportunity to do as chair, sit in on the bond rating call. Terrifying thing to sit in, right? You say nothing unless they ask you a question, because, especially if it's going in the right direction, it just, let it keep going.
Also, you said seventy-one percent of the towns have a Board of Finance, but obviously not even seventy-one percent of those towns have a good triple A rating. So it's, it's a very small portion of those towns.
But they talk about, you know, well, good financial governance, good policies, they wanna see the strength of the community. Is there strife among the boards? And, you know, honestly, we've been able to say, no, there isn't. We, we work collaboratively, and we try and do what's in the best interest of the town. It's, it's kind of, you listen to those, and you're like, oh, it's kind of proud of my town.
And, you know, what sort of checks and balances does the bond rating agency have to check? Do, do they check with our auditors to see if what we say, yeah?
They, they look at the audit, which is why the audit is very, very important. That's a huge thing that they look at. The planner has to give an update on what projects are coming down the line. They may ask specific questions. One of the things, um, OPM puts out, something called municipal fiscal indicators, which, if you guys.
One more reading?
I'm gonna cut you short too, because we're gonna go on to Jeff.
But my point is, you mean, there's a lot of data out there, and they probe that data. We're required, municipalities are required to report it, and they have access to it. And there's something called an AMR report, and I can send it to you.
So I want to thank you for your thoroughness. We're gonna have more questions, but.
But this, this document was phenomenal, honestly.
This is phenomenal, so thank you and your board for all your work.
You're welcome.
And no more reading. Jeff is wearing two roles today, as the Chair of Chips, Board of Ed, and on the commission, so. Well, if you like to see change.
Yeah, I, I can hopefully be much quicker than, uh, impressive, but that's, I don't mean that that's because they're wrestling with this new form of government much, much, uh, to different degree than, than we are. Obviously, my comments are on behalf of seven of the eight board members, as well as the superintendent. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have some opening remarks, and then we'll talk about the, uh, the board. That's not me. So, let me just, uh, cut to, sorry, I thought this was gonna be a little bit more formal, I thought I was gonna be up on the dais. So that's why I'm gonna read some of this, and just, obviously you guys know me well enough, just cut, if you have a question. So, so in my opinion, the Board of Education is the, the best functioning board or commission in this town. I know I'm biased. I know I'm biased. Let me just throw that out there. Republican or Democrat, we check our party affiliation, and more importantly, our egos at the door in order to deliver a high-quality product. High-quality product is education that is highly ranked and recognized throughout the state for our students while doing so in a very fiscally responsible manner. Since each board member takes their responsibility to the town, and really, more importantly, to students seriously, we don't engage in the political squabbling that other towns do. We attract, and because of that, we attract a highly professional staff with little turnover. To say it a different way, we attract the best talent in the state because of the lack of squabbling on the Board of Education. That continuity and institutional knowledge is a major, major contributor to the accolades received by the education system in this town. I'm extremely proud of the work my colleagues on the Board of Education and the superintendent and his team do. And I could really bore you for hours, and, well, I could use my time, I probably will, about how we deliver this excellent education in these challenges, Lisa mentioned, in these challenging financial times. But I, but I know you really want, just not an infomercial, but to focus on, on charter specifics. Charter specifics, we don't necessarily have too many recommendations. Because we function so well right now, we are getting the job done. So I, I'll, I'll conclude just these opening remarks, and then we'll, like I said, we'll get to some of the other comments. I'll conclude these, the open comments, by just reaffirming my assertion that our board, with eight very strong and different personalities, we function extremely well under these, under the existing charter, and that Simsbury has a board, and an education system that it can be proud of and is viewed as a model in the state. Now, let, let's get to the, the elections or the board itself. The composition of the board, I should say. The way we function right now dates back to an agreement in the early nineteen nineties by both parties to have us have an even four-four split. At the time, the political parties recognized that the most families moved to Simsbury for the schools. And that, by and large, holds, I'll, I'll look to my realtors to, to, to.
Yes, it's still true.
Hundred percent.
Thank you. The, the schools were, and they continue to be, an economic driver in this town. So, in, in short, what they understood was, the school system was a significant asset in this town, and it needed to be protected from endless partisan and political fighting. And Lisa referenced this earlier, but if you look at what's going on at the national level between the parties, and the constant bickering and getting nothing done demonstrates that the both parties, and I say both parties, not just one, both parties in those early days that came to agreement with admittedly this unique arrangement, were absolutely right. Were absolutely right. Is it unique? Yes, it's a unique situation. The, 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 us, I've gone to flirt between, or float between, flirt, uh, float, float between us kinda us and, uh, us and yous, just bear with me, I'm sorry, since I am wearing the two hats. So the, the charter revision, obviously, we're, we're charged with updating the charter to resolve any, the current problems in town, right? The major issue we're gonna have to tackle is exactly what we just talked about. This transition from first selectman to town manager, is it working, how's it working? And that's, that is gonna take us, that is not an insignificant task, and it's gonna take a lot of time and resources. So I ask with that, coupled with the, the review of planning its own, and all the other issues that we, that we're talking about, what, what, what is the problem? What is the, what is the, that changing the constitution and functionality of the Board of Education is gonna solve? The current charter does not prohibit competitive races. Individuals can petition their way onto the ballot. And they also can challenge, the way this works, it's not just a rubber stamp. The individuals in the parties can challenge the, the nominees in the caucus process. There are multiple ways that individuals can get on or off the ballot. We have a robust, uh, public audience at the beginning and end of every meeting, that's twice the meeting. All we ask for is the public to be respectful and civil when addressing the board. There is no Democrat or Republican issue or platform that's not being addressed by this current makeup and how we operate. We function very well. Do we need to change, I'll, I'll just throw a couple scenarios out there. Do we need to change because of budget issues? Are we not fulfilling our role in that sense? Well, during the twenty-three, twenty-four year, that's the most, uh, recent figures we have. Our, our per pupil expenditure was twenty thou, twenty thousand, roughly twenty thousand five hundred dollars. That is fifteenth out of twenty-seven towns in the Hartford area. And that is eleventh out of twenty towns in our DURG. Our DURG is a smaller, it's a group of, kinda comparable to towns, but run around the western part of the state. And it is much lower than the twenty-two, almost twenty-three thousand state average. On the state level, we're sixty-two, or sixty-seven, sorry, sixty seconds in the state in, in per pupil expenditures. We're not, we're, we're being fiscal stewards, we're being responsible with the town taxpayers' money. In, in addition, we have a ten-year annual, uh, average, averaged, it's easy for me to say, average annual budget increase of two point six percent. Two point six percent. I, I would be willing to bet few, if any, other boards of education have demonstrated such fiscal responsibility providing an excellent education to students while trying to address an aging infrastructure. Let me just stop it. I, I'll, I'll say, our youngest, before the Latimer renovation, our, our youngest school was built in nineteen sixty-nine. So we are, we are dealing with an aging infrastructure, we are dealing with increasing enrollment. We're one of the only towns in this, in the state that are dealing, that's dealing with increasing enrollment. And we are facing, and this is not totally unique to Simsbury, but we're, we're facing increasing state mandates coupled with, as we heard earlier, decreasing state reimbursements and funding. A, a bad combination. So, we provide a high-quality product and are fiscally responsible. We function very well and get things done. Our students continue to excel in excellent testing scores. Simsbury High School is ranked seventh in the state by U S News and World Report, that's the highest ranking in years. So again, we're, we're doing things right. Residents can participate in the process in a multitude of ways. We have vigorous debate when appropriate. And again, the Simsbury Board of Education is an attractive place to work because of the lack of politics infighting the Board of Educat, uh, by the, the BOE members. Again, we attract good talent, and that cannot be said too much. There's little to no, because people like to work here because of the lack of, of infighting. Could we do things better? Sure, sure, we always strive to, to improve, but look at the towns you see in the news with highly politicized boards. Boards, towns like Bristol, which is on their third superintendent in four years, because their board does not function well. It is chaos there. Again, you can, you can just look at the news, see the news, to see some of the other towns, I don't, I don't need to name them, you know. Again, and I'll just wrap with this, because I know people are getting tired. Need, again, needlessly interjecting more politics in our board will have significant repercussions in the hiring and retention of administration and teachers, and is nothing to serve the students in the town. Again, whatever we do regarding the Board of Education, I implore each and every one of us. Again, whatever we do regarding the Board of Education, I implore each and every one of us to to look at this situation through the lens of the student. How is it gonna affect the student experience, uh, in this town going forward? So let me stop there, I'm really here to more in this capacity to answer questions.
Has the, has the split, the even split been an issue in any capacity for you?
Uh, no, I I I say in all seriousness, um, it it's, it's, it's one thing that I think is actually a benefit. It attracts a different person individually, that's kind of maybe tired of the politics, right, in town? You know, um, no, as as I said earlier, there's no, there's no Republican versus Democrat issue. We actually, I bet you couldn't figure out who's who on our board, to be honest with you, which quite frankly, I love. And 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 let me, I I wanna, I wanna say this also, it's something Lisa said. I'm I'm, what did I say, long in the tooth too, like this is the end of the road. We are extreme likely not to run again, so I don't, this, this, I don't get anything out of this. Um, I'm not trying to to, uh, hold on to power, you know, whatever that means in the town, twenty-four thousand. So, but again, I I just really caution us to inject politics in a admittedly unique arrangement, but it's working. It's working.
So, if there's this informal agreement between the parties, which I I'm not disputing any of this, how do we, I can can continue to say this only because I'm a newly designated unaffiliated voter, okay? How do we get representation from the largest group of people onto the board? And how do we get the town committees to agree that that's important? Because it's more representative of our population.
Yeah, no, great question. And I'm I'm I'm, we've had this conversation, I've been thinking about it a lot.
Because I'm under you.
No, I I, I mean, there's, there's a couple, it's in, in, and s- just stop me if you don't think I'm really answering the question. One, you can today petition to get on the ballot, right? Not the, not the most optimal, but that that vehicle is is, we, uh, we, I'm assuming, our Republican counterparts have had used that of, switched affiliation, uh, to to run as one of the parties. Again, not optimal, maybe for some, but it's, that that vehicle is there. Or or I would say also, um, y- you know, taking a, as Bob mentioned, taking a page out of, uh, ethics and, um, what's the sec- the separate, that's bad.
Police Commission.
Police Commission. You know, you could direct, maybe you could direct the parties or, uh, or the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think this throughout a little bit. Or or the the first selectman's office to designate, maybe, uh, uh, two years, right?
That's harder because you're elected and police commissions to vote, right?
Right, yeah, no, no, yeah, so, or, but they could, yeah, I I I would have to, I, I, yeah.
Because we have views on appointed boards, but we don't have views on elected boards because of, I mean.
Unless they petition to report it on.
Unless they petition to get the, which has happened.
Right, but you could, you could put language in the charter that said, no more than X
from one party on the board of ed. Not yet. Wanted, that's something that could be done. Right now, it's eight.
Well, I know I keep laboring this point, but because we've got this large population of U's, it's good.
If you said no more than three from one party, then two U's have to be on the eight-member board.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And the parties would have to nominate a U, with nothing stopping them from doing that.
Do you, do you think that would help make the Board of Education better? Does to go tap into the population that you cannot so easily on the Board of Education?
Good, good, good question. I I would say, again, I think we function very well today. Could they add a different perspective? Absolutely. But what I would also say is, we're tapping into those folks now, right? We're, we're not just having these conversations, the eight of us. We are in the schools, we're with the, we're with, you know, you know, we are, we're having these meetings, a little less so lately, but we traditionally have meetings in all the schools. So we'll, we'll meet you, we, our superintendent meets with the P T O presidents. You know, there are different forms where we get input that, uh, although we don't necessarily break it down by party. I'm assuming we're getting, uh, unaffiliated votes too, but but but.
But I keep bringing this up because to your point and to Lisa's point, there's a lot of volunteers in our town on boards and commissions that are, on on one of them, who are older. In in order to engage younger people, younger people are, right, are are, there's, they're more slanted towards being a U because they're not aligned with the party. So how do we get younger volunteers on our boards and commissions? And I think we need to continue talking about, that's my strong, very strong opinion of how to to really get a good representation of our population and get young people involved in the process.
Yeah, I just, I don't even, I I don't disagree with you, I just don't necessarily have a cancer.
I, no, right, no, but that's good, no, I mean, because I'm just, I'm bringing it up again
Yeah, yeah.
because I think it's a conversation that I c- I continue going to every time I look at these elected boards and commissions.
Yep.
They say four, you know, party, you know, party, 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 and then you're.
Yeah. Yep.
But that's what you hear, so.
One of the things.
For this time, party, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, please.
Sorry. Um, one of the things that you hear it all the time is, you know, this is supposed to be an elected board, but the people on the ballot are almost pre-selected, which is not fair. Because I I looked into that and I I figured, you know, this, they really have to be elected because the population can say, we're not voting for this person at all. And then that person theoretically could get no vote. And there would be only three hours or three Ds, um, or two hours, but a- anyway, the, uh, but given how important the school is, you know, I I worry about the perception that this has been pre-selected. And, um, I think that's, and also, you know, the, I I, you know, being from a different country, what I love about the U S is that anyone can serve on anything that they want to serve on. And so it should look like the population, especially when it comes to children. And, uh, that, uh, and and, you know, because we have such a good Board of Education, you don't want to fix what isn't broken. But at the same time, I think the focus should be on not creating the perception that this is on tightly controlled outside of the democratic process, and that's the way the charter reads at this point.
Um, maybe I'm a little tired. It says there's eight, but then later on it says term or four years, four members. So is there a rotating four and four? Is that how that works?
Yeah, we stagger.
Stagger, it's a staggered, it's just, it's a little vague. I'm like, is this staggered? It's a little confusing.
And and just to get back to what, I I think that works really well. That's everything that Lisa said. You have some, um, experience there that can can help. Because, uh, honestly, it, it it took me a good year just to figure out how it all works.
So the staggered every two years?
Every two, yeah, yeah.
Four members are going up for, if they want to get re-elected, let's say.
Yes.
So it's, so, but then the other two, okay, so it's every two, but then it's staggered, okay? I was just a little confused, I was, that was working.
Makes sense, or make it worse to put a slate up of four and only two be selected from each party? So there's always more potential candidates than there are slots. And so there's some kind of movement in the system, so it's not just, yeah, in there.
There's always a Jeff Kendall there.
Historically, uh, because there's always been.
I don't know, just thought.
That's not prohibited now by charter, that can be done.
It can be done, but I think historically, it's been difficult to get, uh, not people to run.
Yeah, it's a process.
To get.
Yeah. So you only end up with
The same.
the same number that you need to vote for, but, you know, that's why there's this perception of, well, I'm, I'm I'm voting for everybody because I gotta vote, I choose two and there's only two to choose from, you're.
Right.
I wonder, Bob, can you, can you legally enter things? Could you, can you legal say you have to vote for?
Um, I, you know, the statutes are pretty prescriptive here. We'll have to look at what the, the Board of Ed, uh, because it's a quasi-state agency, there's a lot of prescriptive language in the statute about how you can make up your Board of Education. There's different options that we'll have to look at and see what can and cannot be done.
There was section nine dash two oh four, is that that whole makeup of everything?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the question of the, like, the perception of of the representative, of how representative the board might be, I, uh, there's a flip side to what we're talking about too. And I understand if if you feel that the two parties don't speak for you, that's a problem and and we could do that. But by having equal, you know, by charter, equal representation of the two parties that are the two organizations in the town that are most active in in working towards the town government, I think that gives a sense that there is representation, that nobody is going to be able to dominate or 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 impose a a particular point of view on the schools. So I think there's a lot to be said for the system we've got now, or the notion that there's equal balance, that, uh, I I'm just thinking, uh, as someone who wasn't involved, you know, three years ago, I remember, uh, because I was running for office for the first time and seeing all the, uh, the posters about the Board of Education and Avon, and I thought the town had lost its mind and and nothing like that was happening in Simsbury and I felt very relieved.
Well, that's the thing, is there is, there are elements of it that are working, which need to be retained. There are elements of it where people are left out of the process for whatever reason. There's like, there's a, there's a barrier, an extra barrier that needs to be overcome. It's not impossible, it can be done.
It's also perceived barrier, yeah.
Yeah, and and then there's also the perception of whether or not this is a democratic process. And, uh, so we have to be very careful because democracy is not just done, it has to seem to be done. And so, uh, that perception is the issue, the what balances it is that we have really good schools.
Yeah.
You know, and so, uh, so, you know, the question is, our, uh, our job is to ensure that the charter has that balanced fairness that represents our democracy, is our town.
I, you know, I I I hear you. I I think one of the challenges with this whole issue is gonna be, we're, we're talking about unaffiliated, right? We're not talking about independents, right?
Well, that's different.
That's a party, right?
That's a different group.
That's a party. And how do you wrap your arms around an unaffiliated who is chosen not to affiliate with any party? That's, not just with Z's and U's, with any party. And I, I, yeah, I don't, that's really how I view it.
Do we have the numbers of percentage currently of unaffiliated?
It's a third or a worse.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a third, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I think it's more.
It's the majority.
I, I, I.
Well, I'm just curious.
It's a little.
It's majority.
Yeah, I would like, I mean, as of now, maybe five years ago was different, but as of now, I'm curious of what the percentage is.
It's, it's the fastest growing group.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, to my point, younger people are less apt to affiliate with a party.
In Connecticut, in Simsbury.
Yep. I don't like either one.
Yeah.
Well, that, that, that's, that's it.
I like it, same way.
Well, I mean, Connecticut, Connecticut, but Connecticut makes it very easy for you to change your party right before election.
Right before, right.
Change it back.
You can, because Connecticut also, you're only allowed to vote in the primary of, for the party that you're registered in.
Yes, oh, okay. Yes.
Where in Massachusetts, you can vote in every primary. So there's, there's lots of nuances to it, and I'm not an election expert.
There's lots of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Jeff, does even a number, I know when you're all working well together, everyone gets along together, it works great. But do you foresee if there was an issue where, like other towns have had issues, having an odd number would help? With such a very large budget and a large sensitive subject being education?
But forces compromise, that's the big thing, right?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but it also brings a new idea to make up education.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if having an odd number.
Yeah, no, it's a great question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm, that's.
That maybe the key, why, why not?
Because if it's a four-four vote, you're the tiebreaker as the chair, right?
Yep.
Okay, I said this point.
No, but you get two of them?
And the other, we're talking about board of select with a six.
Wait, yeah, what happened to?
Board of Finance, five, Board of Finance is six.
I know, well, even people have questioned.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's.
It probably dies, actually.
If it's four-four, what happens?
It's probably dies.
So it's the proposition dies because there's no majority.
Probably deserves to die. The majority deserves to die.
I just don't, I mean, I.
They can't, if you can't agree, probably deserves to die.
There's no tie breaker, shall we say? It's just up for more discussion and debate or just, like you said, it's, it's a non-issue.
I'm assuming it does, yeah.
We've even had that issue, obviously, in your tenure so far. It's good.
So you can get that stuff?
So appreciate you, everyone.
Where was, where was, where was the dessert?
I gotta ask, is it, is there anything you want us to read?
As the Board of Education, I have a list of books for you all.
You don't have a book?
We're gonna be the giving tree at the next.
Oh, just, just, sorry.
It's the charter revision that's what it is.
Says the duties of the, your, your budget, where is the, I'm sorry, it's, um, it's really short, it's one sentence. Fifteenth of March of every year.
Yeah.
No, there, there, there's, can I answer that?
Yeah, please.
There is actually more in there, so, and that's why I rewrote the section. Because it says, in in accordance with this thing, so they have to do it in the form that the Board of Finance asked for. So we get, we get to ask for information, the charter form is in there, so I spelled it out, so it goes without saying.
Almost like the, like, part of the Board of Selectmen, part of the Board of Finance, it, like you said, it's very convoluted right now.
Yeah, well. It was, I tried to clean it up, but there, but to Bob's point, they're also a creature of the state, so they're a creature of the town and the state.
Yeah.
No, I like that.
So their budget is conscribed by, I forgot, by cited in there. So it's in the charter, but also it has to be in accordance with ten-two-two-two.
Yeah, I was just, again, Lisa and I are kind of tied at the hip on on this. We probably talked much more than she really wants to talk about.
I always like, you're my friend.
But Lisa, we, yeah, we, even if it wasn't prescriptive, it it makes no, uh, it makes no sense to us to to not follow their their timetable. Uh, like I said, it's a little clunky just because it's really not as state in Hartford than than anything, uh, we're doing here in town, but, um, I think.
Any more questions?
That's it, I'm done.
Do I have a motion to approve our minutes from January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five?
Second.
No second? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, any opposed? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to table the review of comparable community research?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the third question?
Do I have a motion to approve? Trying to follow your rules, Bob. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for your quick guess.
This.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree. S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools and.
And your government come together.